Now 1:02 PM and a quorum of the board is present. Regular meeting is reconvened. Ms. Evans, are there individuals who wish to address the board during today's meeting?
Yes, there are people who have registered to provide public comment and I will review the rules. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes to address the board and I will keep track of time. We will be strictly following the time limits so that everyone has an opportunity to speak. It is the practice of the board not to respond to comments during the public participation portion of the meeting. We will maintain an atmosphere of respect for all people. A person disrespecting anyone by name or otherwise will be asked to cease. Public participation will occur in person and virtually. We will begin public participation with the persons that are physically in the room with us today and then move to those in the queue online.
First in the room is Bonnie Wood.
Hi.
Hello. Go ahead and have a seat and whenever you're ready, your three minutes can begin.
I should have been at a different meeting earlier this morning than here now, but I think it's fitting here. My name is Bonnie Wood and I'm from Ovadelsi. I'm a retired educator, 31 years, health, physical education, and home and family living. I have some concerns that came up and I'm sorry I didn't see you last month, but, and it has to do with the reading program and Congress and et cetera getting on this, concerns here about teaching foundation, foundational things and calling right, right, there's right and there's wrong, there's absolutes and there's not absolutes, okay? In education, we're to teach the truth, the truth, the knowledge, and what's appropriate, and I'm hearing in this, reading, many kids cannot read in our schools. So if they can't read, it's hard for them to discern what is truth too. And I just think we need to focus more on this reading and get this, that in place. The villainizing truth when we're teaching truth and training a child up in the moral, the truth, the knowledge, and denying the outline which is in the Michigan Constitution. We're supposed to be, I thought, what it said in the Constitution is the appropriate guidelines, religious morality and knowledge being necessary to good government and the happiness of mankind, schools and means of education shall forever be encouraged. And that's in the Michigan Constitution. And I've come here before talking about that. Let's get back to the basics and some of the woke stuff that's going is taking us out this way. You cannot, you can't please everybody, but you can please what is definite on the building blocks of teaching what the body does and et cetera, of how to take care of it, respect it, respect one another, and all the other stuff that's out there. That's in the homes and et cetera. I understand those who are in counseling and et cetera, it's a hard thing. In the school district, it says every school district shall provide for the education of its pupils without discrimination as to religion, creed, race, color, and national origins. Now, when I was growing up, it was pretty clear what was pretty definite that I was a human, I was a male, I'm not a male, I'm a female, and all this other, so I'm just saying, let us get back to basics and thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
All right. Next person in the room is Catherine Gil. All right. And whenever you're comfortable, three minutes can begin.
Hi, my name is Catherine Yell. I represent Wethe County, Macomb. Andrew Jackson said that the Bible is the rock on which our republic rests. Franklin Roosevelt said it is necessary for the welfare of the nation that men's lives be based on the principles of the Bible and that no man, educated or uneducated, can afford to be ignorant of the Bible. For the first 150 years of our great country's existence, this was not only understood but practiced. The Bible and Christianity were present in our public schools, children understood there's a God and a higher power to whom they are accountable. However, as our country became more diverse, challenges to this arose. Some people decided that the First Amendment, although it clearly states only that there shall be no law respecting the establishment of religion, that there should be a complete separation of church and state. We went along with it and God, the Bible, and with the morality and values were removed. Today, however, those same people who screamed for there to be a separation of church and state have introduced their own religion into our public school classrooms. Those that claim to want the Bible and God out have brought their own biblical gods in, picking and choosing which biblical gods, small g, are okay to be worshiped. Take Ishtar, for example, mentioned over 30 times in the Bible. Ishtar was a god associated with war, love, marriage, sex. Ishtar's cult practiced sacred prostitution. Women waited at temples to have sex with strangers in return for a divine blessing. The Bible speaks of Ishtar's relationship with the sky and her influence on weather and climate. Ishtar was also associated with fertility and sex. Her followers often redefined traditional gender roles and engaged in homosexuality. Ishtar is also associated with the pursuit of revenge, confusion, and violence. Molech, who is mentioned throughout the Old Testament, a particularly disturbing practice of molech worship, was infant or child sacrifice. Families allowed children to pass through the fire, be burned alive to molech to secure favor and prosperity. 2 Kings, Chapter 17, says, "And they abandoned all the commandments of the Lord their God and made for themselves metal images of two calves, and they being in Asherah, and worshipped all the hosts of heaven and served Baal." Baal, another biblical god. Worshippers of Baal stole, murdered, committed adultery, swore falsely, and made idols and altars for which to worship him. You say you want religion kept out of schools, but you mean, what you mean is you want Christianity kept out of schools. Make no mistake, the LGBTQ plus pride agenda is religion. It worships gods, only those gods represent transgenderism, homosexuality, confusion, abortion, climate change, adultery, and idol worship. On May 9th, you passed a resolution to honor this religion for two months out of the year, plus March 32nd and a day of silence in April to recognize bullying of transgender students. Are you serious? According to your own statistics, 52% of Michigan 3rd graders can't even read. But let's take a day off of education to recognize bullying of transgender students when in reality, the only students being bullied and harassed are those that worship God and not the LGBTQ plus agenda. Where is the resolution dedicating a month to other religions? Why is there no separation of church and state when you are forcing children to worship your idols and flags that represent your gods?
Thank you so much. And one of our other representatives is going to finish that for us. Stacy Van Oost.
Is she getting me a copy?
All right. And whenever you're ready, you may begin.
All right, thank you. I'm Stacy Van Oost and continuing for Katie, for Wethe County, Macomb. This religion does not belong in schools. I make no mistake, this is a religion. It's a demonic religion, but a religion nonetheless. Your religion teaches that the way they were born was a mistake and that it is a choice to become something else, and it even if they choose. My religion teaches children that everything God creates is wonderful and they are His creation and so wonderfully made that in God's eyes, they are a wonderful and beautiful creation. It's Psalms 139, 13 and 14. Your religion teaches children that life has no intrinsic value and can be destroyed if it inconveniences them. My religion teaches children that every life is precious and not to be harmed. Your religion teaches children to wave a false idol decorated like a rainbow. My religion teaches children that the rainbow is a symbol of God's everlasting love and His covenant with His people on earth. Get your religion out of our schools and away from our children or allow our religion back in so children have a fighting chance against this evil. If you plan on going forward with this disgusting resolution, as it has already passed, to celebrate your gods, I expect there to be an additional resolution to honor our God. If pride flags honoring your gods are allowed in every classroom, then a crucifix honoring our God should be allowed to hang in every classroom. If you truly believe in the separation of church and state, you will reverse this resolution immediately and call for an end to any and all pride celebrations and any and all instructions regarding the LGBTQ agenda. It's about time we get back to educating children and stop indoctrinating them. So thank you on behalf of Wethe County, Macomb. For myself, Stacy Van Oost, I just have a basic problem with the whole resolution as passed in that I don't like to see any group of people elevated. I believe that all men are created equal and when you elevate certain groups over other groups, it just, it almost makes more people want to join that group or something and maybe causes more confusion. So I just think common sense, I'm against bullying of anybody, and so that's my problem with the resolution is it just targets a single group and gives them special days and whatever. It's not so much about the group as common sense and focus on education and protecting all of our kids all of the time when they're in the schools. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up is Gwen Allen.
How is everybody today? Awesome. My name is Gwen Allen and I reside in Macomb County. I'm concerned today about the bad books that are in the schools. I have been attending the school board meetings and I am appalled of what I have been heard and what has been read. I'm very also concerned how our, upon yourselves and what's been infiltrated into the schools that our children are being groomed for such, all the way up to kindergarten and on up. So I am asking to decide that you would decide that you would, you know, take a look and see on the other side what has been said and other speakers have been said. Why don't we, why don't we push, it's time to remember about America. It's Thomas Jefferson's education. Why aren't we pushing anything like this? Our forefathers, founding fathers, had made explicit that from the beginning, they appealed to heaven and became unified and started and compiled a constitution for us to follow by. So I thank you and I just, it's short and sweet, this is my first time, but I wanted to get the thing across and how I feel. And the Constitution, the Bill of Rights, the preamble, this is what we should be pushing. This is what our children need to know. Our forefathers, our past presidents, they don't know that now. And I'd just like to encourage this, this kind of teaching, this kind of textbook applying to our schools instead of pushing the agenda of what's been going on. You're very well, much aware of the MCLs about the education and how it can be a crime pushing these kind of books into our school systems. Thank you so much and giving me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Next is Julie NeWight.
NeWight.
Okay. Sorry about that.
Oh, that's okay.
All right. And whenever you're ready to speak.
It's worse.
Whenever you're ready.
All right. My name is Julie NeWight and I am from Clinton Township. I have five children, one who is a teacher right now. He teaches math at a very diverse school district in Macomb County. He tells me regularly that in his teaching, he notices that his foreign students are very much engaged in their academics and the education. They at home are told and held responsible to learn. You all as educators have a very huge job to educate our children. In the book of Hosea, Hosea 4:6, it says, "My people are destroyed for the lack of knowledge." We all need knowledge. We are in a very competitive world system right now and without knowledge, we are not going to be competitive out in the marketplace. I sat and listened to some of the people that you had speaking earlier. I am a licensed electrician. I went to high school. I went to trade school. I got my license in Connecticut. I got my license here in Michigan. I worked in the field and learned a lot about things like that. Kids need opportunities to do other things besides go to college. You have a very large responsibility. Why don't we get back to academics, teaching them what is necessary, not all this clubs and social stuff? They have time at home to do all of that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Next is Sue Milligan.
My name is Sue Milligan. I'm from Macomb County. Just get to it. Legislation and laws are in place to protect the LGBTQ plus students and faculty in Michigan. As I read your resolution in support of this legislation, I was, it was when I got to the further resolved actions that your agenda became clear. It was the fourth further resolved section that states that the board shall recognize October as LGBTQ plus History Month, June is Pride Month, March 31st is International Transgender Day of Visibility, and a day of silence held on a Friday in April each year. Then there is the fifth further resolution which supports that employees should have the academic freedom to discuss this resolution during class time and that students are to be made aware that district counselors can discuss the subjects contained in the resolution with them. And we know that Proposal 3 allows them to do this without parent permission. These are the resolutions that infringe on the rights of those students and families that are uncomfortable and whose upbringing does not align in any way with the LGBTQ plus agenda. For you to adopt two months plus two extra days of an academic school year and more time if a teacher sees fit to discuss a sexual agenda is a blatant attack on all children's ability to learn the basic skills they need to be critical thinkers. Children should learn and be educated on morals, values, and social issues by their parents and families at home. Schools are responsible for teaching skills of reading, writing, and math, and an accurate history of the state and country so children can grow to be competitive in the world and use these skills, coupled with the values they learn at home, to be critical thinking individuals, unafraid to debate and question ideas that don't align with their ideas, and then to tolerate those they disagree with in a respectful way. You have resolved to go from being tolerant to accepting and now to celebrating an ideology that is far from being aligned with the majority of Michiganders and Americans. You have gone from live and let live to live and give me power to go after your children and you better agree with how we live or we will accuse you of a hate crime and intimidate your children into agreeing with us as well. Discipline, consistent attendance, and the value of learning to read, write, calculate mathematics, and understand the accurate history of our country is the resolution we need to adopt for our schools. Pride in our nation is the only pride that should be encouraged in schools. The majority of parents in Michigan are not aware of this nefarious resolution that you have passed, but it's become a mission for many to make it known. Something I know you are more interested in than children being indoctrinated into a Maoist agenda to eliminate family values and gender is getting reelected. It is a mission of not just a few who are represented here to make this agenda known and to make sure those who voted for this are not elected again. And if you want to talk about bullying and threats, there are 360 million Christians worldwide, worldwide, living in fear of being persecuted. Eight per day are being martyred. June 29th is International Day of the Christian Martyr. That might be your resolution.
Thank you so much. To educate others. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Julie Bartholomew.
And Christina Kleber, we're here together, is that okay? I don't know. Is that all right to talk together?
Yes. You come to the table together, yep, it would be three minutes for the two of you.
For the two of us? Okay.
And whenever you're ready.
Okay. We are here to bring some exciting news. I am Julie Bartholomew. I'm a physician and an inventor and this is Christina Kleber. She is, I'm a school nurse at Caseville Public Schools. I work for Shore Hospital. And we just launched a pilot for mental health in Caseville Public School and our statistics, our data is extraordinary. And then we'll tell you a little bit about the program. First Christina's going to share.
So my clinic visits last year was 654 visits for May and June, and then this year for May and June was 409. So that's 245 less visits to the clinic for headaches and different things of those.
For a 30-day pilot.
For a 30-day pilot. And then behavioral offenses from April through May this year for grades six through 12 decreased by 42.7% and kindergarten through 5th grade were decreased by 27.5%.
Okay. What we launched, we launched five minutes in the morning and five minutes before they left school, K through 12. It is a mental wellness initiative. It has, it's science-backed. There are seven components to it. Starts off with laughing. We activate the brain in different ways so that we can take a dysregulated nervous system and calm down that body. And so we start with a laugh. We move into a trauma-informed practice where they're looking at a beautiful animal or flower, they ground, then they move into a breathwork practice, and then I take them, we take them somewhere in Michigan visually and somewhere around the world, and they just let go. So they go focus, then they're releasing, and then they hear positive affirmations, positive things, and then statements about being compassionate and kind. We did that in the morning and in the afternoon, we did a let go and release. We did it for students and teachers, 260 participants. Everybody across the board felt calmer. We have, we've had teachers tell us about looking at their tracker watches, that their heart rate has gone down. We have students that have asked us to keep it going over the summer, teachers begging us to do that. It's simple. They just listen to it. It's, they plug it in their ears and they turn it on. It's five minutes, there's nothing to learn, the secret sauce isn't, it doesn't take away from the teachers. We've had extraordinary results. And I know we only have a few more seconds, I just, we wanted to share that with you because we're so thrilled and it's in a rural community and we're very passionate about it and would love to share more if anybody's interested. It's been extraordinary. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay. Next in the room is Gwen Bliss.
My name is Gwen Bliss. I'm from Livingston County. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity. I do have a teaching background in special education. From Central Michigan University, I've been a resident of Michigan from the birth on up. I have worked in a volunteer capacity for over 20 years as a leader and also as a director of a youth program. And I've also served as a precinct delegate about four years ago. However, I feel very unprepared for this meeting because I did not know about this until about nine o'clock this morning and as a teacher, I would never go before a class unprepared, so this isn't my best, but it is very important to me and so I felt it worth my time to be here. The reason that I'm here is during the time that I served as a precinct delegate, some of my neighbors had asked me about a concern that they had and I had told them as a precinct delegate, I didn't know what I was doing, but I needed to know what upset them, what were their concerns. The bad stuff takes care of itself. What are the things that you want me to bring up if I have an opportunity? And overwhelmingly, at that particular time, it had to do with education. Specifically, a friend of mine from the Linden School District had an open school board meeting because some of the parents were very concerned about the content that their, that the teachers were using in the classroom with their children. During the board meeting, they had described some of the actual material because it was difficult for the parents to understand and the staff, what is the real concern? And so they read some excerpts from a book, I don't remember the title of the book, I would have been prepared, it had the word kite in it. But the description that was of concern to the parents had to do with two seven-year-old children that were sodomized. They were abducted and sodomized. And it went on to describe in great detail feces and blood running down their legs, the blank expression of the children as they watched each other be victimized. That's just one example. And then when the parents had asked, why would you be exposing our children to this? The overwhelming response that they received was to make them more compassionate toward kids that were victims of sex trafficking. And in my opinion, as a teacher and as an adult, that is something that should be left up to the professionals that deal with counseling for people that go through trauma, not for minors. Another neighbor had come to me in the Heartland School District. Her daughter was very concerned about a book that she had to read for a group project. It was called The Girl with the Dragon Tattoo. It contained graphic sexual as well as violent scenes and her daughter had fallen into anxiety as well as depression and wished that she could kill herself. When she went to the school, went to the teacher, the teacher said, go to the school board. So they went to the school board and the school board said she had the choice to opt out, however, the child was given that as a group project.
Thank you so much for your time. Next is John Kraus.
Whenever you're ready, you may begin. Good afternoon and thank you for having this opportunity. My name is John Kraus. I reside in Kent County, have been a lifelong educator, going into my 30th year, mostly as a high school administrator, CT principal, director of instruction. And I'm here on behalf of a group of schools called the Maven Consortium of Schools, five public school districts, that have banded together to find a digital solution to better engage students and to help them navigate into careers along with their parents and families in a more equitable way. The schools that I support, you know, really, we believe that this aligns to Governor Whitton or 60 by 30 in terms of looking at how do we show the relevance of degrees and credentials into the workplace so that students will start applying themselves earlier and not drop out as we see too often, especially in underserved communities. We also believe it supports the Board of Education's Top 10 Plan. The problem we're solving is we really need to significantly increase that number of students and adults who feel eligible and competent enough to move into the jobs that are in the Michigan economy. Things like CAD, 3D printing, laser cutting, data analytics, Internet of Things, computer coding, and cybersecurity. We also recognize that our teachers, while very strong in their academic preparation, don't have the transference of knowledge into these industries and how can we bring that to them? So through a digital solution, we're building with a partner who's building it for free. We have the opportunity to work students through a progression of digital technologies, one of which is called Grow Main Street, where we have 5th through 8th graders across the state who are designing 3D cars and assembling them and learning about EV, as well as construction and design, designing buildings and cities, fashion and apparel, looking at shoes, and also building Internet of Things kits for temperature sensors, heart rate monitors, water quality sensors, and motion detectors as it relates to the energy industry. We've been very fortunate to work with partners like Michigan State where they were part of a USDA grant for $10 million and have written these schools into that grant to look at how we can use this technology to better educate students about their food supply and mitigate against food shocks. And I'm very excited in July, just in less than a month, we'll be going to Washington, DC with Ravenna Public Schools, who's representing Michigan as one of five schools in the country for the Rural Tech Project under the US Department of Education and presenting these outcomes where they've had 162 students build these sensors, you know, they've had 300 and some students in middle school design and build these shoes. We're really focused on moving into generative AI and looking at how we can use that to better create tools for teachers and counselors to take things off their workload, to make it more enjoyable in teaching and make it more personalized for students. So we're partnering with MySTEM, you know, in terms of, we just received one of their P3 grants. We've appreciated the 98 C dollars because that's what funded this for those schools in the consortium. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
And I can leave these if you're taking these paper for the record?
Sure. That's fine.
Hi, my name is Sandra Novatny and I'm from Oakland County. I'm a mother and a grandmother. And to me, this is an outright attack on our family, on our children. This is a child abuse as far as I'm concerned. Anyone with eyes can see. There is male and female. If you are confused, look at nature. Gender identity has taken over our schools, trans, non-binary, and if you don't address them and their correct pronouns, which is they and them, you are a bigot or a homophobic. Just because you feel something, it doesn't make it true. When you teach- When you teach about George Washington, you don't teach he had sex with his wife. You teach what he did as a president. Children are loved and nurtured, raised by their parents, not the state. Congress should not be misled. Treating students and parents with dignity and respect means allowing them to live according to their own beliefs and sexual matters. Codifying LGBT ideology into a civil right would take away fundamental freedoms from those who don't conform. That's not equality, it's injustice. The school's job is to educate them, not to indoctrinate and cause confusion. In Luke 17:2, it says, "It would be better for you to have a millstone hung around your neck and be thrown into the sea than to cause one of these little ones to stumble." I thank you for the time to speak. Thanks.
Thank you. Carla Boyd.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for having me here today. My name is Carla Boyd and I'm here representing the Epilepsy Foundation of Michigan to discuss a critical bill initiative called the Seizure Safe Schools Act. My daughter, Lane, was diagnosed with incurable drug-resistant epilepsy when she was in the sixth grade. We became very close with the educators and staff in the East Grand Rapids School District as she progressed through the system. And they truly were our lifeline during some very dark days. As a member of the Epilepsy Foundation of Michigan Board of Directors, I'm also here to represent the almost 110,000 people in Michigan who suffer from seizures, 14,000 of whom are children. And it's very important to point out that epilepsy is greater in prevalence than cerebral palsy, multiple sclerosis, and Parkinson's disease combined. This impacts a very large student population. And most people aren't aware of this prevalence because sadly, it's still a very stigmatized disease. And epilepsy kills people. About 50,000 people a year in our country die from seizure-related causes. It's an incredibly serious and very complicated disease. The foundation is seeking to equip our schools to both recognize the types of seizures that can occur, and there are over 40 of them, and how to respond so our school personnel feel supported as they confront seizure emergencies, and they will. And very importantly, we want to create an environment that allows students with seizures to learn and thrive. I'd like to start by going over the first component of this bill. We'll hopefully have a number this week. This first element would mean that all school personnel take a seizure recognition and first aid training every two years. This is critical because we know that one in 26 people will develop epilepsy in their lifetime, one in 10 people will just have a seizure. And not all seizure types look alike and have the same treatment. Again, there's over 40 different kinds. And this is one reason why it's so important that school personnel recognize when a seizure is happening and know how to administer proper first aid. My daughter was misdiagnosed for over two years because no one could recognize that she was actually having over a dozen seizures an hour. It would have just taken one person and it would have saved us countless time and heartache. But it's also intentional that we are not limiting this training to educators, but rather to all school personnel because seizures can happen anyplace, anytime, whether it's the playground, the lunchroom, on the bus. This training is free. The Epilepsy Foundation, working with the CDC, has developed a web-based training that we're offering to the state to use at no cost. It's available either on-demand, online, or live instructor-led webinar. Time to complete the course varies by user, but it's about an hour. And continuing education credits are also available for certified health education credits with a certificate provided. So that's just the first component of this bill. And I will turn it over to my son to tell you about the rest. Thank you.
Thank you. Wyatt Sterling.
Good afternoon and thank you for having me today. My name is Wyatt Sterling and I'm here on behalf of the Epilepsy Foundation of Michigan, my sister Wayne. And my sister Lane. I'm a current rising junior at East Grand Rapids High School. To continue on the elements of the Seizure Safe Schools Act, the second part of the bill would require that every student with an epilepsy diagnosis have a seizure action plan on file, and most importantly, available to any school personnel that the student may come into contact with. A seizure action plan outlines important information, like what type of seizures a student has, what they look like, potential triggers, and necessary treatments. These plans are often developed between a patient, family, and the team of medical professionals that treat their epilepsy. They serve as a very important roadmap to keep students with seizures safely in school. And there is precedent for this, as Michigan currently requires similar action plans for asthma, allergies, and diabetes. The third element would require that at least one full-time individual working out of that specific school to be trained on the administration of epilepsy medications, most importantly, rescue medications. Many children are prescribed the rescue medication to prevent a prolonged seizure or cluster seizures, which is one seizure after another. These rescue medications save the lives of children in our state every day. It is insufficient to rely simply on calling EMS to handle this, as many rescue medications must be given in the first three to five minutes to be fully effective. Without fast administration, a student can go into what is called status epilepticus, essentially where the seizure won't stop. This is a medical emergency that can lead to permanent brain damage or even death. In the event a school has a full-time dedicated nurse, then this person will receive the epilepsy training. However, we know Michigan currently has a very high nurse-per-pupil ratio. Right now, over 4,200 students per one nurse. And oftentimes, a school nurse is responsible for many schools and not just one. Again, this would be free online training that provides 1.25 continuing education credits. Finally, the Fourth Amendment is a Good Samaritan Clause. This is standard language we see in similar bills such as CPR. This clause would not hold the person liable acting out of good faith in the event an adverse event occurs. We believe this bill would make it much safer for the 14,000 children with epilepsy in Michigan to attend school. It would also bring Michigan on par with the other 20 states that have already passed similar legislation. While we made great strides in the last two legislative cycles, we did not make it to the finish line. We are currently meeting with potential bill sponsors and hope to have a bill number soon. We know that every school board in the state looks to you for your guidance and leadership, so we didn't want to wait to bring this to your attention. On behalf of the epilepsy community in Michigan and my sister, Lane, I ask that you support this bill. Thank you again for your time today.
Thank you. All right. Last in the room is Bree Morgenberg.
Hello. Good afternoon. Bree Morgenberg from Isabella County. Moms for Liberty. Don't be scared. I know we've been labeled as a hate group. I promise you, I don't hate. And if you do have feelings of hate, there's definitely counseling services that you can probably tap into that will help you work through those feelings. Because I should not be hated and I should not be called hateful because I have parental rights that I want to exercise. I'm here to talk about the Freedom to Read Resolution that you have, though. So moving forward, according to a psychologist from Psychology Today, fiction allows the reader to exit our identities and mentally step into different ones. Fiction is an invitation to put aside identities and enter a space where we can simulate different ways of being that is transformational. Then by exploring other minds, we are given the opportunity to practice experiencing different emotions, thoughts, and behaviors than what we would otherwise live. Books, books that invite children to explore sex, books that encourage them to grow sexually as they are encouraged to simulate different sexual identities and practice experiencing different sexual emotions, thoughts, and behaviors are disgusting and filthy, quite literally perverted, and not within the scope of morality, religion, and knowledge that our constitution speaks of. The resolution as presented is infringing not just on the health and safety of my child, but also the constitutional unlawful right as a parent to direct the education of my child. So I am curious, when you created this Freedom to Read Resolution, did you ask yourselves these three questions? Number one, can it morally be put on display? And let me explain that. If you take the book Gender Queer, where there's a picture of a male with his penis exposed and another person in their mouth going on it, is that morally correct to sit that at the front of the library when kids walk in? Number two, would permission be granted to have students watch a movie of it? So to put this into effect, let's take the book A Court of Mist and Furry on page 53. And let's imagine, like, let's visualize this. Quote, "Releas tore through my body and he pounded into me hard and fast, drawing out my pleasure until I felt and saw and smelled the bond between us." Do you think we can get a permission slip for students to watch that in a movie? And my third question, is it safe? Studies show that pornography leads to the same brain activity as alcohol libelism or drug abuse. So if you support and pass this resolution with the freedom to read with sexual books, why don't we also support resolutions that encourage kids to use drugs and alcohol? And heck, why not have two months of the year where we have drug and alcohol flags that we promote in the schools? Think about it. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move to the people that are in the queue online. Caller, can you hear me?
I can.
If you could please state your name and where you're calling from, and then you can provide your three minutes of public comment.
My name is Shereen Anderson. I stay and reside in Purple Woods, Michigan. I'm actually in the office today, but I'm on the phone. And I would just like to know about parental rights when it comes to children in foster care, even as a delinquent. What educational rights do they have? And can they be assured to have parents' rights when it comes to a voice of education, especially if their child has special needs, as well as special education? Because of COVID, my child's son's psychiatrist passed away and forms wasn't being able to be filled out properly. Is there alternative of getting these forms filled out for IP or 504 plans? Title I could still be implemented for that child, as well as Black History being continuously taught through all districts and not just for the month of February, but implemented all year round, as if it's not just something that is, should just be taught once a year and as if we are all part of society? As well as, just to piggyback, and as I heard the young lady speak about certain things, we will want morally taught sexual education, not about what gender it was or anything or how to implement sexual intercourse, but those sexual health classes are taught to prevent STDs, not demonstrate different positioning. And no matter what any youth desires to like or entertain as adults, we are overseers over our children. And at some point, what is mature levels of implementing sexual behavior? When do we become a society that didn't teach moral integrity of having marriage first? And no matter what they like, it is deplorable if it is being taught in visual stimulation on how to position certain things and implement certain things without them having the knowledge of knowing who they really are and their own identity first? Because all of us have had a stage where we felt pretty ugly. We didn't know who we were or what we were or what we liked. Yet it wasn't influence to make any decisions until we were wise enough to make so ourselves. And I just would hope that these things are not implemented in our schools to teach anything else but to have high morals and standards of integrity and to love all equally. But more importantly, to be wise in decision-making that they are making, to be independent, mature, and not have sexual orientation at a very immature age and then have all these radical emotions behind it.
Thank you very much for your public comment today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, caller, can you hear me?
Yes.
When you're ready, please state your name and where you're calling from, and you can begin your three minutes.
Hi, this is Katie McFarland and I'm a parent in the Troy School District. I'm calling to oppose the Free to Read Resolution that the majority of the members on this board will of course pass as a way to justify age-inappropriate sexual content being accessible to minors. One such example is the book Gender Queer, which was recently discovered in the Troy High School Library in addition to other school libraries across the state. This book contains a graphic image of two women, one wearing a strap-on dildo and the other performing oral sex. Many of you on this board seem to think that kids need to see themselves in books through these sexual images in order to feel included. Exposing minors to pornography is abusive and criminal. The true practice of inclusion involves inviting someone to sit with you at lunch or inviting that person to hang out after school. Many people in the LGBTQ community are horrified by this abusive agenda being pushed on our most vulnerable population, minor-aged children. Not all of them agree. Stop putting them in a box. And I highly recommend you check out the Gays Against Groomers group. You could really learn something from them. Please stop preying on kids and let them have an actual education, free from your radical sexual agenda. The law trumps this meaningless resolution, and all you are doing is further exposing yourselves when you vote yes on this today. Tom and Nikki, as always, thank you for your leadership.
Thank you. Hello, caller, can you hear me?
Hello, yes.
Hi. Can I ask that you mute the YouTube behind you, please? Thank you. Whenever you're ready, state your name, where you're calling from, and you can begin your three minutes.
Okay. My name is Madeline Thomas and I'm calling from Livingston, Michigan.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. I just was reading the Resolution, Freedom to Read. I also went over excerpts from the books that were suggested in Freedom to Read. And these books, parents have a duty and a right to protect their children from explicit traumatizing literature. And these books definitely are. Source can be told without getting into explicit sexual behavior ad nauseam. Please do not, do not teach our children or let our children use any of these obnoxious books. This is sexualizing and grooming our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, caller, can you hear me?
I can.
Whenever you're ready, state your name, where you're calling from, and you can begin your three minutes of public comment.
Thank you so much. My name is Dennis Quall and I am a resident of Midland, Michigan. I thank you for this opportunity to speak and appreciate your time. I oppose any and all resolutions, including the ones that have just passed, or propositions that would in any way allow for students of any age access to literature, books, media of any kind, and computer access that would have sexual explicit content or gender identity material. This would also include any teaching and special education offered on LGBTQ. Anything to do with sexuality, including gender identity, is best addressed by parents and should never be allowed to happen at school, certainly not without prior consent from a parent. Recently reviewing published research on adverse effects and outcomes that occur when children are exposed to this type of material is very disconcerting. This research, published research, confirms that literature and media exposure to these materials has similar effects as watching pornography. These outcomes range from early pregnancies, STDs, STIs, increase in picking riskier partners, depression, mental health outcomes that are bad, sexual abuse, and others that would, we should actually not want to occur and/or be a part of. These outcomes affect your lives both in health and emotional well-being while being a child in school and carry on into adulthood. I worked in healthcare for over 40 years. The best way to avoid the occurrence of any unwanted disorder or disease is to refrain from any aspect that is known to contribute to it or to be linked to it. There's no difference with this scenario. If we want to avoid the deleterious effects that this can have on our children, we remove these materials. I would hope that your goal is the same, to have the best interests in mind for our children. There are best interests, not others, that have other interests that want to promote this. Also, as an FYI, during the last election cycle, I knocked on over 1,500 doors. And one of the items that everyone had in common, whether they were Republican or Democrat or Independent, was that they did not want this scenario to occur in the public schools and were very upset about hearing about these things that were happening. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Hello, caller, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Thank you. If you'll please state your name, where you're calling from, and then you can begin your three minutes of public comment.
Okay, thank you for taking my call. My name is Liz Neely from Grand Rapids. I disapprove of Michigan's K-312 social studies standard as it outlines biased content used to indoctrinate political and racial views onto groups of people to influence political outcomes and institutions, large and small. I strongly oppose House Bill 4569, voter preregistration that would require Michigan Department of Education to coordinate with Michigan Secretary of State to solicit voter registration through those aged sixteen in public schools. I'm also concerned with the appropriation of school funding among districts. On June sixth, the Education Committee met in the Senate to discuss the need to reform policy within Detroit Public Schools to allow for increased pay based on merit for new teachers hired post two thousand nineteen. The current pay restriction is limited to DPS, new hires, and is hurting the quality of education for students within that district, and only worsens recruitment efforts for new good quality teachers. Senator Ruth Johnson explained the pay scale for teachers statewide has remained flat the past two years, whereas administration pay, including superintendents, has increased at a rapid rate, and there is a need to flatten the curve statewide. Senator Johnson explained forty-two million dollars sent to one school district went to an offshore account and doesn't believe it to be recovered. Oversight is needed to ensure state money sent to districts is allocated appropriately and delivered to teachers and students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Hello, caller, can you hear me?
Hello.
Hello, can you hear me?
Hello.
Yes, if you could please state your name and where you're calling from, and you can begin your three minutes of public comment.
Okay, um, my name is Carlos Correa. Uh, um, you say where I'm from?
Yep.
Um, from Moplin.
Okay, whenever you're ready to begin your, your comment, you can begin.
Okay. Um, um, my name is Carlos Correa. I'm here to, um, talk about, um, and display for all the departmental education, um, about the parenting, um, like, uh, guardianship, uh, that students, um, uh, in foster care like need. Um, um, I understand, uh, that, uh, schools are like really are protected on who is like the guardian of the, um, of the youth. So, um, it's hard to, uh, for, uh, youth to, to know and, um, to know like, uh, when, uh, they have like, uh, guardianship, and also for the schools. Um, in my, I have, in my experience, uh, when I was dealing with that, uh, there was like some, um, um, the school says that I need to have, uh, like a guardian. And every time I walk here, or any person in the foster care comes to the school, um, they not like, um, um, allow for them to pick me up or anything. So, for, for the school was really, uh, difficult because they didn't, they have to have like a person, um, that is entitled, like, the youth. And, um, I didn't have the, like, um, decision to choose, uh, who's gonna be my, like, guardianship, even if I want to for them to be. So, um, and also like, um, I didn't, I didn't, when I was, like, taken, uh, into a meeting, um, sometimes I would be late because they didn't have, like, knowledge of who, uh, that person was because he wasn't in my, um, in my, um, account, you know, in school to be like a guardian. So it was hard for them, and, you know, sometimes I would miss, uh, important appointments. Um, so, um, it would be easier for, for them just to, to show, you know, who they are to the youth, and for the youth to, to, um, have the right to say like, oh, yes, I know that person, or like, no, I don't know it. And like that, only if they show the ID and say, you know, I'm here for, for this, uh, student, you know, and, and.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
Sorry. Hello?
All right, caller, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, I can.
Hello?
Okay, caller, thank you. If you could state your name and where you're calling from, and then you can begin your three minutes of public comment.
Hi, this is Victory Little, and I'm from Marion County down in southwest Michigan. Um, I was calling in regarding the Freedom to Read Resolution. Um, I have some concerns about that, major concerns about that. Uh, it seems very, very tone deaf, um, given the news coverage and, um, just the, the thousands of parents in Michigan that are up in arms about smut books that are in our public school libraries. Um, basically, the, the issue at hand is not banning books. The issue at hand is age appropriate restrictions on media that our children are consuming. You have to remember that unlike a public library, a public school library's exclusive audience is minor children, with a few exceptions. You know, we have some that, you know, turn eighteen before they graduate high school, so they're technically adults before they leave high school. But as, you know, by and large, um, the, the exclusive audience is minors. So we have to keep that in mind. Um, one thing that was cited in the resolution was a poll that was done in two thousand twenty-two that said seventy percent of Michigan parents oppose book banning. That is actually false, and that, that poll is very flawed because there were only eight hundred people polled, and there are eight million voters, just voters in Michigan. There's eight million, there's ten million residents of, of Michigan. So that was a very small, um, section of people that were polled via cell phone, by the way. And that question that they asked was actually about public libraries. Again, not public school libraries. So you have to consider what question was asked in that poll when you are looking at that, that seventy percent. So that's very misleading to cite that in this resolution. Um, by and large, parents do not support children having access to pornographic material. And again, we are not talking about banning books. We are talking about age appropriate restrictions on media that the exclusive audience of minors could possibly be consuming. Um, I mean, if you want to know why Michigan public schools' population has declined so much in the last two years, just look at all this wokeness that's happening in these schools. We have gone from some form of moral standard to no morals, no safeguards, nothing at all to protect our children, and it keeps getting worse. Parents are choosing to take their children to private, private and parochial schools, and they are choosing to homeschool kids, even though it's a very tough stretch on their family, um, economically, because the public schools are going in this terrible direction. And we can't stand for this anymore. I, I ask you to not, um, vote for this Freedom to Read Resolution. I think if you want to put the nail in the coffin of Michigan public schools, go ahead and stay on this path. But otherwise, I ask you to please vote no on this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, caller, can you hear me?
Yes, how are you?
I'm great, how are you?
Good, good, good. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to, go ahead, I'm sorry.
That's okay. If you could state your name and where you're calling from, and then you can begin your three minutes.
Okay, my name is Sean Hill. I'm calling for St. Joseph, Michigan. And, uh, just wanted to call in on this, uh, Freedom to Read Resolution. I do believe in education for our kids, but I do believe that our kids need to be just taught the basic math, reading, English, science, and the current, and the history of our, our country. And, uh, to be able to allow them to read any of these books that are in, inappropriate for their age, I'm talking like, to just allow them to be in any schools to any age is irresponsible. I mean, has anybody ever thought that, uh, that maybe some of the problems in our world is because of what we're allowing some of these kids to see in our schools? And, uh, don't do anything about it? My thing is, you know, is there's an age appropriate, uh, there's, uh, there's appropriate age for each reading of each book. And we should leave it at that, you know, not, not to the younger kids in our community. These are our kids. We pay you guys just to educate them in the math, science, and English, and history. My goodness, why are we doing this to our kids, allowing them to read the smut? I guess I'm turning it around, and I'm gonna ask the board. Why are we so insistent on teaching our kids about pornography at such a young age? I understand we have the cell phones, they have access to cell phones, and there's crazy things that happen on cell phones, but this is a school. And you, you come back, you say, oh, you're all for banning books. No, I'm not for banning books. The thing of it is, is the school is inappropriate for some of these books. I've seen some of these books that you guys want to allow in these schools, and they're just crazy. We're not banning books, we're not Nazis, we've been called Nazis before. What I mean by not, not banning books is, they are allowed in our current, uh, public libraries. Allow them in the per, public library. And if the parents want to buy these books, they sell them in the stores, so how is that banning books? Let the parents buy the kids the books. Let us, let the parents do the parenting, teachers and educators, take care of it, just educating our kids. We don't need personal agendas allowed in our schools. For crying out loud, we can allow every other flag in our schools these days, what about the American flag? I mean, we, there's some schools that don't even have the American flags up in the schools anymore, for crying out loud. You know, let's teach our kids about what our country is all about. The history, the true history, why people fought for our freedoms. But you know what? Let's protect the kids, though, too. Don't, don't allow them to get off, off track here. Like I said, a lot of this problem's in our, in our society is probably because of what we've exposed them to as young kids. Let's protect them, educate them the right way. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Hello, caller, can you hear me?
Yep.
If, if you'd please state your name and where you're calling from, and you can begin your three minutes of public comment.
Thank you, how you doing? My name is Jimmy Jones. I'm calling from Detroit, Michigan. Okay, so.
Yep, whenever you're ready, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, yes, I'm just calling, uh, and I just wanted, one of the main things I wanted to speak on was just to speak to why it's important that the Department of Education, uh, needs to have a, a foster, foster youth or foster care specific focus. Uh, a lot of times things could get, a lot of different issues can overlap across different groups, but with the foster care youth specifically, this population, um, has a unique experience that definitely needs a, a unique focus as well. Um, parents of other students who are not in foster care are able to make decisions for their children. But for students in foster care, um, but for students in foster care, judges, lawyers, and social workers are making decisions to move them. Their parents who still hold rights, still hold rights, are not often contacted or engaged at all. Uh, we need to do better to identify students in foster care. We need to do better to support them. We need to do better to get their, get their credits, uh, walking them through different processes, and we need to do better helping them with tutoring. Most of all, schools need to know who the legal parents for education are for students in foster care. Um, and those, that's really the main thing I kind of just wanted to highlight. I didn't know how many minutes I had. Uh, yeah, so, was it, did I have, uh, any more time, or was it just the three minutes?
You have a minute and a half left.
Okay, so, yeah, just, and for clarity, again, one of the big, big area is when it comes to legal rights. You know, um, when it comes to students in foster care, that often gets lost in the midst of a lot of different things, and that's a real important and nuanced issue when it comes to, uh, the schools needing to know who the legal parents for education are for students in foster care, because you have so many different stakeholders or people speaking up on behalf of, of the youth, and the youth not knowing the parents of the youth who they may not be with no longer, not knowing that, that when it comes to legalities and their, their power that they have still, despite the different situations that might come up, that may seem like they don't have that, that role, that say that voice. And so I just wanted to make sure, like, this population, when it comes to education, educational rights advocacy, that, that there's a unique focus specific to this, because it's very important to understand that difference, that nuanced, uh, reality for students that have to go through the system, uh, versus those that do not. While some of them share many diff, uh, of the same struggles and different situations or different contexts, this is something that I just really felt like we needed to hit the, uh, hammer on the nail when it comes to uniqueness of the youth in foster care navigating the educational, uh, system. And that's all I had to say.
Thank you so much. Hello, caller, can you hear me?
Yes, hello?
Hi, if you please state your name and where you're calling from, then you can begin your three minutes of comment.
Yes, my name is Christian Randall, and I am calling from Detroit, Michigan. I am also with the Organization of Park West Foundation.
Very good. Go for it.
Okay, so, I was calling just to, um, I was calling, uh, wait, first, let me just say this. Dear stupid attended and honorable state board members, I was just calling, I was joining in to explain why the Department of Education needs to have a foster care specific focus. And the reason I feel like they should have that, because us, like, kids in foster care, um, a lot of times feel discluded from, you know, outdoor, outbound, like, students especially. And because we're in a residential school, there have been a bunch of times where stuff that will happen with foster care education that wouldn't really happen with, you know, normal, regular kids that, you know, at home or to public schools, like, moving residential to residential and not being able to transfer our credits with us. Um, there's been a, and it's kind of like foster care have been stuck in one spot when it comes to education. And we need to, to just have, just focus on foster care a little more than they've been focused on. Like, especially with their education, because even though we are in foster care, we are, you know, we are still a part of the future, you know what I mean? So, just having to, and me being who I am, who went through all of these different struggles with education, being in foster care and moving through foster care, it's highly disappointing, it makes you want to drop out, it makes you want to quit, and you just got to have it in you to hold on, or have a really good support team to make you hold on. Because if you don't have that, you will drop out, and that's when you become homeless, or you don't get a nice job, or, you know, you don't move forward in life. So just to stop that, that's why I'm on here advocating for foster youth to have you specific focus with us. Because if not, where will we go? It's like, I get that it's trying to look at all students in general, but we're not all students in general. But we, our schooling is very different from regular schooling. We're sometimes on a campus, so we like basically a homeschool, but not a home school. So, uh, with that, transferring credits, if we end up leaving and going into a public school, everything we did could be erased. So that's why I'm asking why, asking the Department of Education to have a foster care specific focus.
Thank you so much.
So thank you for listening.
All right, hello caller, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Yes, I can.
Oh, somebody's on the line.
It's, yeah, we'll give it a second. It's okay. There we go. All right, caller, if you could state your name and where you're calling from and then you can begin your three minutes of comment.
Sheila from McComb. John fourteen five seven. Jesus said, I am the way and the truth and the life. No one comes to the Father except through me.
Caller, can I interrupt for a second, please? Can you state your last name, please?
Oh, Sheila Se.
I don't have to state my last name.
S E E.
Okay. G. Sheila Se. Yep, thank you. All right, I'm proud of, um, I'm proud of all the parents and grandparents who have given public comment. Way to protect your children. Way to go. Just when I think the majority of the board can't go further, can't go any further into, into the depths of discrimination, you prove me wrong, wrong once again. Money and the ESG scores is the driver of these policies, which have nothing to do with academics whatsoever. While my son was in the public school, I learned a lot about the public schools. The most enlightened thing I learned is that you can opt your child out of the state testing. If you Well, yours from actually from a superintendent is if the majority of the parents opt out, the schools lose, lose the funding. Oh, my goodness, that sounds like a Bud Light moment or a Target moment for the public schools. Parents, you want to make a real change and a difference in the public schools, opt your children out of the state testing. The testing does absolutely nothing for your children and the only, and the only thing they do is, is bring money to the schools. They don't use the data to make any type of change for your child. I should know. I dealt with that for my son. Another opt-out is for sexual content. The Great Schools Initiative is a great group who is actually helping parents get the sexual content away from the kids. Go parents, go to greatschoolsinitiative.org and get connected to get your child opted out of the sexual content. Pull your kids and homeschool them. That is a great option for those that can do it. And honestly, if I can do it, anyone can. You can create their diploma. They have an easier way of doing schooling that's balanced for them. And honestly, they'll have a life balance that's great for their future. They'll learn critical thinking and the work is paced for them. The homeschool community continues to grow by leaps and bounds and we are growing and building every single day. That's okay, keep ignoring me. I'm good with that. Um, get connected with local groups like Moms for Liberty, We the County, or FEC United, to name just a few, so you can learn the alternative options you have. Oh, and don't forget, vote for Nikki Snyder for Senate, www.hireniki.com. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Thank you. Mike, are there any other callers who have pre-registered for public comment today?
No, there's not.
Thank you. That concludes public comment.
Thank you, Mike Flamigno and Liz Evans. Uh, thank you for all those of you who, uh, shared public comment. It's two fifteen, board. Please have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular and committee of the whole meeting of May ninth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, moved by Dr. Pritchett, supported by, supported by Mr. McMillan. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
And Tilly?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, board. May I please have a motion to approve the minutes of the State Board of Education Work Session of May sixteenth, twenty twenty-three? Thank you, Dr. Pritchett. Dr. Pritchett moves it. Do we have a second? A second from, uh, Mr. Bullock. Any, um, any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? If we could do a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Pass.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
And Tilly?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much, board. Board, uh, the next item on today's agenda is presentation and approval of the proposed standards for personal finance. During this presentation, there will be discussion on the results from public comment regarding the proposed standards for personal finance and request for approval of the proposed standards. For implementation of the new personal finance one-half course credit graduation requirement, the department is recommending that the current social studies content expectations for personal finance be republished as standalone personal finance content expectations. We welcome our presenters, Dr. Delsa Chapman, Deputy Superintendent for the Division of Educator, Student, and School Support, Dr. Corinne E. Edwards, Director of the Office of Educational Support, and Mr. Scott Koenig, Social Studies Consultant in the Office of Educational Support. This is a presentation. The board, a vote for consideration of the proposed standards is on the agenda. Uh, presenters, welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Rice, and good afternoon, board. We are here today seeking approval for the proposed standards for personal standard, the proposed standards for personal finance that were presented during the April twenty twenty-three State Board of Education meeting. We will now hear from Dr. Corinne Edwards as she provides the overview of the presentation, followed by Scott Koenig, our MDE Social Studies Consultant, who will share details of our ask and the work to date. Dr. Edwards?
Thank you, Dr. Chapman, and good afternoon. We're here to provide information on the proposed standards or content expectations for personal finance and to share next steps following public comment. Michigan's top ten Strategic Education Plan Guiding Principle number four states, all students are provided every opportunity to achieve the broadest range of life's dreams. Our work with the personal finance standards will support the effort to ensure that all Michigan students will have the requisite knowledge and skills to be critical thinkers in this area to further inform and guide their life choices. The department recommends that the current social studies content expectations for personal finance be republished as standalone personal finance content expectations for approval by the Michigan State Board of Education. These content expectations will affect students entering eighth grade and fall twenty twenty-three or those who will become ninth graders in the fall of twenty twenty-eight. Our presentation will provide an overview of the personal finance content expectations and the development timeline, a review of the public comment data, and share results and recommendations as it relates to next steps in the request for approval of the proposed personal finance content expectations. I will now turn it over to Mr. Scott Koenig, Social Studies Consultant, to walk us through this information.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards. In twenty nineteen, the Michigan State Board of Education approved the K twelve social studies standards. The social studies standards were organized into categories within each of the social studies content areas, with content expectations providing more specificity to each standard. Personal finance content expectations were organized under the standard category of personal finance within the economics content area. In twenty twenty-two, new law required that a half-credit course in personal finance be added as a requirement for a diploma under the Michigan Merit Curriculum and that the department develop personal finance subject area content expectations specific to personal finance. To advance the implementation of the personal finance requirement, the department is recommending the use of the social studies personal finance content expectations approved in twenty nineteen, but republish them separately as the personal finance content expectations for approval by the Michigan State Board of Education. This slide is an outline of the six content expectations we are proposing for personal finance. We have shared a hard copy of the proposed personal finance content expectations, I believe, uh, which provides more details on each of them. Note that each content expectation is focused on key concepts in financial literacy. Earning income, buying goods and services, saving, using credit, financial investing, and protecting and ensuring. In our April presentation, a question was asked to explain and expand upon the personal finance content expectation number two. This content expectation exists to support students' learning around factors that are important to consider when buying a good or service as a consumer. We have bolted examples of how educators might implement this thinking in the learning spaces they create. In addition, we have added a compelling question an educator might use to begin a unit of inquiry around this content expectation. As part of the process for the approval of the current social studies personal finance standards, as the personal finance standalone content expectations, the MDE conducted an external review by experts in personal finance and personal finance education. Higher education input was provided by representatives from Grand Valley State University. Internal input was solicited from the Office, Offices of Educator Excellence, Assessment and Accountability, and Career and Technical Education. We were intentional in this selection to include a diverse group of representatives. Representatives also, also included some of who helped to write the social studies finance content expectations. After an internal review and an SBE presentation on this data, it was established that the proposed content expectations be shared for public comment. It is here we can now share the results. Question one provides the demographic information of the one hundred and forty-eight participants who completed the content expectation survey. It is worth noting that participants could select more than one category. Educators, parents, concerned citizens, and school and district administrators were our top participants. Question two results include seventy-one percent of participants either agreeing or strongly agreeing that the proposed content expectations represent an appropriate level of intellectual rigor and our foundational concepts of the personal finance discipline. Question three results includes seventy-six percent of participants noting that the proposed content expectations are presented in a logical, easy-to-use format. They are clearly written and are easy to understand. Question four results include eighty-seven percent of participants supporting that the proposed content expectations are open for local interpretation and allow for Michigan schools and districts to develop curriculum, unit, course, and assessments that meet MMC requirements. Question five results in the majority of two-thirds of participants sharing that the proposed content expectations provide foundational concepts that support local schools and districts' efforts in ensuring outcomes currently of our students. The law requiring a half-credit course in personal finance has boosted the importance of financial literacy education for students. The public comment results affirm that these proposed content expectations, as accepted in twenty nineteen, serve as a core foundational space from which educators can develop student learning opportunities. It also recognizes the legislation for amplifying the need for personal finance education for students. However, standards are just words on paper until actualized in curriculum and meaningful educational experiences for students. They are a floor, a foundation to build upon, not a ceiling of where to stop. Public feedback recognizes this and expresses the need for implementation support that includes professional learning around content and instruction, as well as curricular models and other resources. By accepting these proposed content expectations, we will meet the personal finance law's timeline, while allowing appropriate time for the MDE, regional leaders, and experts and districts to move forward with efforts to prepare educators to implement personal finance learning with fidelity. Based on feedback from the public comment period, the proposed content expectations are foundationally strong and should be approved as standalone personal finance content expectations. The department will need to work closely with its partners to intentionally wrap around these content expectations with professional learning and curricular resources to ensure all students have the opportunity for rigorous, meaningful, personal finance learning experiences. As presented, our immediate next steps includes a request for the State Board of Education to adopt the proposed content expectations. Once approved, implementation support is planned for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year with release of the content expectations to the field by July first with an accompanying guidance document. The gun, this guidance document is intended to help schools prepare for and ensure financial literacy. Learning opportunities are available for students entering high school in the fall of twenty twenty-four as required by the amended Michigan Merit Curriculum. MDE will work with its partners and stakeholders to develop a series of rigorous companion documents that include, can include performance indicators and learning objectives. The MDE will also continue working with its partners to provide implementation support and professional learning opportunities for districts. The approval of these content expectations starts the support, the work and support that will allow depth and rigor to occur in learning spaces for personal finance at local levels. This step is the beginning. Thank you. I'll turn it over to Dr. Chapman and questions.
Thank you, Mr. Koenig, and thank you, Dr. Edwards. Um, Dr. Rice, this concludes our presentation and our ask for approval of the proposed standards for personal, for personal finance.
Thank you, Dr. Chapman, Dr. Edwards, Mr. Koenig. Uh, we appreciate your presentation. Board members, questions or comments? Uh, Ms. Snyder?
So this morning I presented a financial literacy resolution to encourage the department to go back to the drawing board. Um, and I'm going to describe why and share with the public, some of the public comment that we had on these, um, content expectations. Um, but I'm going to start from the beginning. Our legislature, uh, last session decided to pass legislation on behalf of students so that they could receive robust instruction on personal finance, so that they can make educated decisions before they sign on the dotted line for things like the FAFSA and student loans, and to understand the impact of the financial decisions they make, including credit limits and things like borrowing. So that was the purpose of this legislation. Within the legislation, and you guys used a number of pieces of language that actually changes what was actually written, so I'm going to make that clear now. Legislation makes it clear that the subject area content expectations must state in clear and measurable terms what pupils are expected to know upon completion. That is what is written in the legislation, not in your language that is simply easy to understand. Subject area content expectations should be written after considering expert opinions surrounding states and national standards. Not that the most significant input would be received from education establishment. There are specific public comments that relate directly to national standards in other states that have done things, and I will read those in a moment. Legislation makes it clear that the MDE responsible for creating subject area content expectations for the half-credit requirement in student personal finance, not recycling our economic social studies standards. Those are two completely different things. We've already had this conversation at the board. Based on legislation, MDE needs to go back to the drawing board and create content area expectations within the original intent of the legislation, of which some of us here voted yes for, and not recycle vague economic social studies standards that will not benefit students. Our department knows how many people have filed a FAFSA, just like this morning. We had an incredible presentation. Lots of time, energy, effort, money, and infrastructure goes into Michigan Reconnect to make sure that students of these higher certificates and those programming know what they're doing, know what decisions they're making, and have everything they need to make the best decisions for themselves. The same needs to happen in K through twelve. So we, we encourage them to fill out a FAFSA. We have FAFSA trackers. We have people who will help kids fill out FAFSA's and go into debt. Yet the department is refusing to produce meaningful financial literacy standards so that students know what kind of financial decisions they are making when they make them. When we think about the student loan debt crisis, our debt crisis, generally speaking, from a national perspective, if we can't commit to what it looks like to write meaningful standards on this level, we're not going to come near a resolution whatsoever on a bipartisan basis. And by the way, this legislation was bipartisan. So the fact that the negotiation already happened in the legislature and this bureaucratic department was appropriated the money to do this work and we just decided, hey, we should recycle social study standards. That's a good idea. Again, go back to the drawing board. These standards are absolutely a foundation and you were tasked with developing subject area content expectations, which are two different things, not standards. These are not content expectations. They are social study standards already adopted and that apply to economics, not personal financial literacy. So I'm going to take the opportunity, since we were given a number of issues, things that support the fact that, hey, social study standards would be a good idea in this situation, and I'm going to read some public comment from people that wrote in to us so that people understand why this is not effective. Okay, so one person says, Wisconsin has a forty-seven-page document detailing its personal finance curriculum. These standards would fit on a half a page. These standards would fit on a half a page. What you are about to send to local school districts will fit on a half a page. Wisconsin has a 47-page document simply detailing personal finance literacy." I'm not saying that longer is always better, but longer often offers more clarity. These standards are so vague that any district that wants to avoid offering students appropriate rigorous financial education could easily do so. Requiring a semester of personal finance was the right thing to do. A person's appropriate rigorous financial education could easily do so. Requiring a semester of personal finance was the right thing to do. Further, "I have been teaching personal finance for over 10 years, and I absolutely believe that it should be required course for all students. The standards proposed are too vague to be of true value to school districts and the students they serve. I am fearful that many schools will choose to give students credit for personal finance and economics instead of requiring a standalone course. This would be a great disservice to the students. My husband teaches economics at another local school district, and it is impossible to teach all the standards of econ and the necessary standards of personal finance in one semester or trimester. I wholeheartedly believe that Michigan students deserve a standalone course dedicated to personal finance. If these standards are passed as-is, our Michigan standards will not be adequate and will not compare to other states' robust standards. Please go back to the drawing board and create standards that will benefit the students of Michigan. Our legislators passed a bill to require personal finance for all Michigan students, and these standards do not reflect the intention of that bill." Thank you. Here's another one. "The intent of this legislation was to create a standalone course dedicated to teaching young students about personal finance and money management. I testified in support of this bill, but not these standards. The proposed standards lack detail and rigor, and will not help us meet the goal of educating students about personal finance concepts before they make massive financial decisions in the real world. If we care about students and care about guaranteeing that they have a comprehensive financial education before graduating high school and signing on that FAFSA dotted line," which is my words, not theirs, "we will reevaluate these standards so that students take a standalone course dedicated to a more comprehensive financial education. As a 20-year personal finance educator, professional development leader, for personal finance teachers, personal finance advocate, and a parent, I am happy to talk more about this and be part of the solution." One last one. "Michigan's personal finance content standards fall woefully short of what districts and schools will need to develop curriculum and guide teacher instruction." Go back to the drawing board, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Mr. McMillan.
Just so I understand, so, this literally is just lifting standards out of the social studies standards that were approved in 2019? There's like nothing added or subtracted? They just kind of lifted them and said, this is now our personal finance? Is that right? I'm just trying to understand.
Yes, I will. Within the social studies standards, there is a domain that is specific to economics. Within that domain, there is, there are, I'm sorry, personal finance standards. Those personal finance standards, and it has been referenced already, that in comparison to Wisconsin, which has the exact same number of standards and the exact same, it's a direct correlation between the two states. But to answer your question, Mr. McMillan, yes, they are standards that sat in or were housed within the economics domain of the social studies standards, but those standards are personal finance.
Okay, so before, in 2019, when social studies standards were passed, those were required for graduation? Is that right, Dr. Rice? The social studies standards passed in 2019?
The social studies standards are required. The standards aren't required for graduation, per se.
Okay, so they were already required, so this seems like we're just lifting something that was already required and saying it's now required? I don't, I mean, I don't think that was the intent of the legislation, you know, was to make something that's required already just be required. I don't, I just don't understand at all. We were given a list of 32, 32 individuals who were on the committee that said, this is good. All but one, I believe, get a government paycheck. There's no people who are experts in personal finance that do this for the public, that do this for a living. There are people from LARA, from Treasury Department, from RISA, ISDs. I mean, you know, I just, I mean, as you all know, I'm not too excited about prescriptive standards. I prefer to give as much latitude to the locals, but when we're talking about something that the legislation, the legislature did, it just, it doesn't even seem like we actually fulfilled it. Again, I would have thought that we could have at least made some adjustments, but to just, I don't, I just don't understand the intent, like, so something was already required, and now we're going to lift it out and require it? I just, I don't understand the reasoning behind it, and I do think that a better job could be done, maybe it doesn't necessarily have to be as, it doesn't have to be real prescriptive, but just from experts that really understand personal finance and are out there in the pub, you know, out there, I know capitalism is a bad word for some people, but out there in the free market advising people and really have real-life experience with helping people make sure they don't get into bankruptcy and making sure that they can make ends meet, you know, it just might be good to go back and get their opinions. I also am not sure about standards being a floor and not a ceiling. I think we've had that, I've had that debate where, you know, if they have to meet this, that's why I teach to the test, this is the ceiling. This is all, you know, maybe not in this instance, but in many instances, standards are really the ceiling. This is what we got to cover, so it's because it's going to be on the test. These standards are not on any kind of statewide test. Is that right?
They are not on a statewide test. I mean, you could argue that they're in part buried in the high school social studies test. So, I mean, in miniature, perhaps.
Yeah.
In one instance, in miniature, perhaps.
Well, now that they're lifted out, are they still going to be in there, in that statewide test? Or are they now being lifted out of that test?
That's a great question.
It is a fractional element of a larger test in a grade, in a, I mean, it's really quite small.
I just, yeah, but it's not a fraction anymore. It's being lifted out, right?
We can ask our test experts in OEAA the percentage of the high school social studies test that's dedicated specifically to economics and more specifically to personal finance. I would submit to you that it would be very small.
But now it's lifted out of it, because it's in its own...
We are proposing standalone standards for a standalone course, or what could be a standalone course, what we would recommend to be a standalone course. But that it still ends up getting picked up in social studies in one form or fashion is possible, and that it would be lightly treated on the assessment is likewise possible. But given the amount of social studies that exists, and the amount of economics that exists within that social studies, and the amount of personal finance that exists within the economics within the social studies, I would again submit to you that it would be a very small portion.
I'm just asking. I'm not saying good or bad.
And I'm just trying to give you, I'm just trying to give you the best answer that I have.
Okay.
Yeah.
Remember Tilly had her hand up?
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Not Ms. Snyder, Mr. McMillan, Ms. Tilly, and then Mr. Bullock.
Okay. So, I kind of get the jump to, or the macroeconomics component. I'm not in favor of marrying that with personal finance. I think it needs to be more micro and, I mean, that component, it just needs to be more of a focus on personal finance and the macroeconomics piece, they need to learn that in econ. I would also like to suggest for PF3 changing that to budgeting and saving. A lot of people don't know how to budget well. They know how to spend way better than they know how to budget. So, I think that that's important, that it's a focus on budgeting. And budgeting and saving can be two different things. And then also paying taxes. I think that's an important piece with personal finance. Not only, they need to understand the taxes that are coming out of their earnings, I see that for PF1, earning income. They need to understand that component, but they need to understand that taxes are coming out of everything that they buy, and the different ways that taxes come out. Their tax dollars come out when they purchase food, purchase clothing, when they purchase gas, you know, the different, when they purchase a home, when they purchase a car. They need to understand taxes and how that works. Those are my suggestions so far.
Thank you very much. Other, Dr. Pritchett, I'm sorry, Mr. Bullock, and then Dr. Pritchett.
Technically, I didn't have my hand up, however, I'll pass it to Dr.
Very good. Dr. Pritchett.
Thank you. I'm looking at this totally pragmatically, and part of that comes from my background as a high school administrator and as a high school social studies teacher. First of all, I think everybody should have to take a personal finance course. The US economy probably would be in better shape right now. There, made a political comment, but anyways. In the econ course, where these originally were, knowing, and Tiffany has already alluded to that, knowing how intense that course is, probably personal finance, if it was touched upon, wasn't touched upon very much. So, you know, the legislature rose to the occasion last year and added it as a requirement, certain, added it as a requirement to the Michigan Merit Curriculum. Some other day, when I have the floor, I'll go on about how I need that person, the Merit Curriculum relooked at, because we can't keep doing this, in my opinion, but that's a whole other discussion. So now I'm looking at this pragmatically. There's no question that these are broad categories, but you are absolutely right. What will happen if they are passed is that school districts, social studies teachers, ISDs across the state will look at these and begin to write their courses. Those courses may be, depending on the size of the high school, which is my other concern, and who is available to teach, they may decide that this best works in a business math course at this point. It best works with a social studies teacher. It best works with possibly a math teacher, depending on what kind of staffing they've got at their high school. Kids who are going into eighth grade this coming fall will begin scheduling for high school in January or February. That's this coming, January or February. Prior to that, there's a whole lot of stuff that's got to go on, not only this, but a whole lot of other stuff, as far as what are we going to offer? How are we going to offer this? And we need to communicate that, not only to our students, but as importantly, to their parents, so that everybody understands, for your current eighth grader who's going to be a ninth grader, this is what's going to be required of them in order to graduate from XYZ High School. So, while they are very broad, which in my opinion is helpful, because I think it gives staff, and that staff, the staff I've been able to talk to, the colleagues that I am still in contact with have indicated to me that they are ready to go. They're ready to develop those courses, knowing full well that they probably will find some things that are a little difficult to maybe figure out, or possibly can't find a resource. And so I was pleased to see that MDE is going to be providing much-needed professional development. And I can tell you, and I'm in college in a lot of years, but we didn't spend a whole lot of time on personal finance. We did on econ, on the big econ, but not on this. So, we will need the professional development for our staff in order to deliver this. But I also know what's going to start happening next year, and legislation is clear on when it's supposed to be implemented for those current, well, it'll be next year's eighth graders. So, that's my feedback. I'm looking at it from a pragmatic point of view. Every state's different. Not every state has Michigan Merit Curriculum. They have their own curriculums, I understand that, but again, I think these are broad enough at this point, and the fact that they've been pulled out from an extremely intense course of economics is a good thing, and students will benefit from that in the long run.
And benefit from a standalone course.
Yeah, right. It'll become a standalone course.
Well, it's going to get glossed over. So this is the baseline.
Right.
And I know we just dropped, a state had 47 pages, but there are like three states that have less than six pages that cover their whole curriculum on personal finance. And so, we set the baseline, the districts write their curriculum, they need time, so this is the timeline, and hopefully, all of that that you so eloquently described that takes time is put in place, and they will discover the good practices, the bad, and then it will develop into a more hardline course. But if we delay this, we delay a whole systematic process, and so...
Yeah. That's exactly where I'm coming from.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Pritchett. Thank you, Mr. Bullock. Who is next? Board members? Any other reflections? Going once and twice, seeing none. Here's, discussion is over. If we could have a roll call vote, please. Actually, we have a motion, and then a second.
Dr. Rice.
Yes.
I want to make those suggestions. I want to amend...
We're going to put a motion on the table, we're going to second it, and then if you'd like to make a motion to amend, you may. I have a motion to approve the standards as submitted, moved by Dr. Pritchett, seconded by a former Senator Bullock, who voted for this in the legislature. Discussion, please. Okay. Ms. Tilly, to you.
Motion to amend.
So we've got a motion, we've got a second. If you want a motion to amend, this is the time.
Motion to amend PF3, instead of just saving, budgeting and saving, and then I would like to add PF7, paying taxes.
Board.
You know you're in trouble when Tom's...
Oh, if you were supporting that, all right.
No, I got, you take it. No, MacMillan supported. I take note.
So we have, we have, I think we're with that speaker who shared the value of laughter. So we have a motion to amend the proposed personal finance standards, quitting budgeting and before saving in PF3, adding a section, paying taxes, PF7. That's a motion from Ms. Tilly. Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Second from Mr. McMillan. Any discussion associated therewith?
Yes.
So, you call on some folks.
Please, I'm calling on you.
I support, I just think we need to define paying taxes.
Oh, do you?
Like, it can still be a broad thing, but like, when you brought it up, you brought up taxes from your paycheck, but then there are property taxes, there are...
Yes, and it needs to encompass all of that, and it needs to be...
I know, you know, I need to know who FICA is. I'm looking for them still.
I think you have, you know, that's it you have.
So, yeah, I don't know how it's, I don't know how it's worded as a header for a category, but I, the concept of paying taxes, totally agree, but how do, yeah, just how do we label it? And that, they can figure that out.
Presenters, is the concept of paying taxes in the current standards?
No, she said that, she's saying add a, amend, add a F7, which is taxes.
I'm asking, I'm asking the question as.
Right. There's, there's space for taxation to be discussed within the six that are presented, but if the amendment would like to go forward.
Not the ones that caused the war, just.
That's another concept.
Understandings in that.
So, it, it is arguably embedded already, but that it is freestanding is not a problem. Fine, okay. So we have a motion, we have a second, um, Ms., Ms. Lipton and then Ms. Snyder, go ahead, please.
I have a question. If you know, what does that do to the public comment period? If these are amended, does the public comment period have to be re, um?
Good question.
Because that then, based on what Dr. Pritchett talked about.
The process.
Might affect the timeline for the districts.
I think the reality is, is that there are times when we take public comment and we morph what initially went out for public comment. We either do it prior to our recommendation coming forward to the board or after. I don't think that that is an enormous issue. I think if we were to turn these on their heads, that would be a different story. I think we would have a responsibility to put it back out for public comment. But I don't think that what we are talking about now rises to that level. I think you're making clear that savings comes from something and that something comes from a budgeting process. Taxation logically falls out of these six categories. I don't think that there is anything in these changes, uh, that would require a, um, a separate public comment period. By the way, if we do go out for a separate public comment period, if we do decide to completely rework these standards, we are not going to have this, uh, for our schools, such that they are able to have course descriptions in a course catalog by the time that, uh, children are beginning to sign up for these courses in the second semester for the first semester of the following school year. I mean, a lot of us have done this for a living. Some of us have talked about it, some of us have actually done it. So, um, that's, that's the clarification. Is there any more clarification before I get back to the board members?
I just wanted to come back to the question on, on the first personal finance standard, there's space very specifically about taxation and taxes and how that works. So educators could expand, build the curriculum around, upon, I just wanted to be specific. So, sorry, I wasn't ignoring the conversation, I just wanted to make sure.
The point of this is, to make a freestanding category wouldn't alter the content an enormous amount, it would, or, it would alter the wrapper, if you will. Very good. Thank you, Ms. Lipton. Do you have another question?
Just, I wanted to know if the mover would accept a friendly amendment, um, that these, if they're to be made, um, uh, so long as it would not affect the public comment period with the public comment timetable.
Well, like, it was taken, it was taken as it, like, yes, yes. I, I'll accept that.
Very good.
And the second, or will too?
Very, very good. We have a, we have a motion.
Which is important. You gotta have both. You don't have both, not good.
You know, it's, it's, it's good. We're, we're with you, Ms. Snyder.
I won't let you second again. Okay, sorry. I'm gonna, I'm just gonna say I'm gonna vote yes on this amendment, but I'm going to, again, highlight, and this is my third pass at the point I'm trying to make, so I'm gonna be pretty passionate about it at this point. Y'all are talking about specifics, right? Those are content area expectations, not social study standards that stand in for content area expectations in which the law prescribed your department to write. So, you know, to say, we're gonna just throw this out there and then we're gonna come back around and we're all gonna discuss and amend and do all this stuff, that's not, the, the work of the board is to approve the content area expectations that you designed. And that's what the law says, that's the process the law asks us to follow. So if we put something out there and you're thinking, hey, I wanted something on taxes and I wanted to know about FICA and I wanted these specifics in there, again, if we vote yes on the total, right, I'll, I'll vote yes on that amendment because I truly believe there should be content area expectations as prescribed by the law out there. You guys are still voting yes on something that doesn't actually follow the law that was written and then saying, you know what, I do wanna make sure that there are content area expectations. It's just a bit, you know, I don't, I don't wanna use any words to describe that, but it's, it's short sighted, it's not the leadership that we are here to do.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. McMillan.
My question to, I guess, the presenters would be, um, I, I heard the word broad as far as these standards. If they were passed without these amendments, is it possible that, um, a school could meet the standards while not discussing at all budgeting or taxes? Without these standards, without these, without these amendments, could they meet the, the standards without at all discussing budgeting or taxes?
Taxes is already in there.
Well, no, well, but he said it was broad, so I kinda wanna understand, are we doing something that, um, now we wanna make sure that it's clear to schools that you must teach on taxes and budgeting as opposed to, it wasn't necessarily that clear before?
Go ahead.
I, I feel that, based on what is accepted or passed at this point, allows our, our, us, the department, our partners, our, our stakeholders to be able to come together to build supporting mechanisms, materials, uh, as, and as far as other personal finance expectations that are across the nation, that those concepts and ideas could also be put into this space in order to better support educators in their process and creating their learning environments for their students.
Not exactly. Don't know how that, did that.
So, my point is, is that by accept, by accepting the proposed standards, whether with the amendment or not, it allows for work to occur that helps direct educators in their classroom. So if the concern is that avoidance or missing some piece, I think this, this other side of the work will help assist and guide educators in their curriculum development.
I'm just asking, is the amendment that is being, about to be voted on, gonna change anything whatsoever? Like, um, before, they may not have talked about, they, they had the opportu- they had the ability to not talk about taxes or budgeting, but now they're gonna have to. Is that what this amendment is gonna do?
No.
So before they didn't have, they were, they were absolutely gonna cover taxes and budgeting and now they're absolutely gonna cover taxes?
There's, there's no way to do a personal finance course without doing taxes and budgeting. Cannot.
Okay. I mean, uh, the maker was talking about gas tax and, or income tax and other taxes. I don't, I mean, I didn't know, now they're gonna have to, to cover that. That's fine. And getting to Mrs. Snyder, I always, uh, in the legislature, if you can make something bad better, then you go ahead and do it. It doesn't mean that I'll support the, I certainly won't support the final passage. But I just.
Now you're acting like some of your colleagues.
Let's, let's not, let's not do, let's not, let's not go there. Any other comments? This is on Ms. Tilly's proposed amendment.
I have a question.
Yes.
To, to the point that Board Member Snyder made. And we have, uh, uh, someone that was in the legislator, legislature while this was, made. You or anybody else here can answer about, is this, are we, are we in line with the law? I just wanna make sure that we're in alignment.
We are not.
Currently, as we, as we move forward now, yes.
So I would say we are not, obviously.
I would disagree with that.
We, so, so there's a difference of opinion between board members, um, and that's, uh, that's why we're here. Any other, any other, um, questions or comments regarding Ms. Tilly's amendment to the base motion? Hearing done. If we could have a roll call vote on Ms. Tilly's amendment to that base motion.
Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Tilly?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Is there any other discussion on the base, uh, motion, the base, um, motion as now amended?
I would, just real, real briefly, I would just say that, uh, I, you know, I don't think this does follow the law. I don't think any legislator would, uh, I, I would hope that no legislator would say, I'm passing a law that doesn't do anything. That basically, this, something was required and now I'm gonna make the same exact words required is not, uh, is not fulfilling what the law was, was intended to do. As far as standards go. I understand that it might be more, uh, they may or may not make it more full because of this, uh, but I, I just, it just seems like there should be some changes, some, something that, um, and again, I, I'm more con- I'm also concerned with who that was used to basically stamp what was done in 2019 as good now, when if it's gonna be fuller, then maybe there should have been better experts who really have an understanding of personal finance from a, uh, free market and from a, a real life, who actually dealt with and, and guided people through bankruptcies and through, uh, financial crises and budgeting and things, and things like that. So I think that would have been more helpful as well.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. McMillan. Dr. Carnell?
Thank you, Dr. Rice. Another part of the law was, the intent was to, um, bring about half of credit or course associated with personal finance. So it's not just about the standards, it's about separating and giving a course for credit in that area. And in order to address that half credit, we need the standards. Standards, something that we already had, it made common sense to use the standards we already had for the field and for the ease of making sure that those standards are adhered. It's not just about the standards, it's about the half.
Thank you, Dr. Carnell. Dr. Pew?
Just, again, probably, um, reiterating the question that, uh, Board Member Tilly asked, but just wanting to make sure, Senator Bullock, that you are good with this language and that the way that we are rolling out implementation is, um, aligned with the intent. You feel that this is standalone and follows the intent of the, of the law?
I absolutely do. I, I, I can recall the conversations about this, the whole nine and recently, so.
Okay.
And it's like deja vu, it was two months ago, we had these same questions.
Okay. Thank you very much, Dr. Pew. Ms. Snyder?
I'd like to make an emo- a motion to amend PF4 and add, um, knowledge of the FAFSA application. Under using credit. So PF4 is intended to deliver the understanding of how, of using credit, right? So I imagine that when this goes to local school districts, that, you know, they will have, they'll have a, a period of time where they'll discuss that. So can we, uh, go ahead and amend that as a board and add?
Say, just, just, um, repeat the last few words that you wanna add.
So under PF4, using credit, can we add a sub-content area? And, um, say, uh, understanding and knowledge of the FAFSA?
Yeah, let me ask you a question.
Sure.
The, the important piece, the important piece here is the reference to FAFSA, is that correct?
Not that it would be used for helping to apply or fill it out, but knowledge of FAFSA and student loans. How about that? So my, so my motion on the table is to amend PF4, if you wanna write this down. Thank you. Under using credit, knowledge of the FAFSA and student loans.
So, so the, uh, hold on one second.
So that's the motion.
Uh, 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 hold on one second.
Support it.
The, um, the, the language of this, um, I, I'm supportive of the inclusion of focus on student loans. I think there's a value to that.
Sure.
But I wanna get the language correct. And, um, the, the language right now is using student loans and using, so you've gotta make it, you, you've gotta, you've gotta make it grammatically correct if it's going to be in a public document.
So you can do that, as long as it's knowledge of FAFSA and student loans, that we can, you can help me with the language if you prefer that.
Sure enough, okay.
But again, like everything else with these standards, it would go back to the local school district and they would write?
Using credit, including.
FAFSA and student loans.
Including, including student loans?
FAFSA and student loans.
Okay.
With the intended purpose of financial literacy for that person, right? That they would understand what it means to fill out a FAFSA, they would understand the life of a student loan, what it looks like to pay it back. I mean, again, those are, those are. Those are things like we were just talking about with taxes.
We're gonna figure out what we're discussing first and then we will have discussion, but, but I wanted to get the, I wanna get the concept and the wording right because it's an important concept, you can't have it both ways. You can't say it's important in the morning and not in the afternoon. So, um, let's, 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 uh, let's, let's get this, let's get this concept right and the wording right, and then, yes, we need some discussion of it. And then you'll decide if it's a friendly amendment or if it's a voted on amendment, okay? So, using credit, including the student loans and FAFSA application.
So as a sub-concept, yes, under using credit, FAFSA and student loans, you could even just say FAFSA and student loans, that this is an area we intend to educate.
Well, credit is broader than student loans.
But it is a, student loans are, that's what it would fall under, I'm assuming, within these P1, 2, 3, 4, 5 and 6, right?
So using credit, comma, including student loans and FAFSA application.
A sub-concept, yes, of using credit, but not using credit, comma, just a motion to amend and.
PF4 dot eight.
Thank you.
Or whatever.
PF4 dot eight would be FAFSA and student loans.
We're, we're, we're starting to get granular. I mean, we're, we're at the, um, we're at the standard level, not the sub-sub.
Yeah, not.
Level.
Yeah, this is like district work, committee work, this.
Okay. But, but I, but I want to, but I, I want to honor the, the, the concept because the concept is important. Do you believe it's already embedded in the current, uh, structure? If so, tell us about that, please.
Yes, Dr. Rice. So, under that particular standard, the explanation of the standard says, evaluate the benefits, costs and potential impacts of using credit to purchase goods and services. That explanation could be expanded as we develop the companion documents. It also could, what Ms. Snyder shared, could very specifically be included in the learning objectives as well as the performance indicators that would be used to assess the knowledge the students obtained through the acquisition of completing this part of the half-credit personal finance course. So yes, it definitely, we believe, within the explanation of the standard, it's already embedded there, but it could be more singular, could be more granularly called out as we expand out through the development of what the performance indicators and.
And the learning objectives.
And the learning objectives are for that particular standard.
To, to that point, do you have a problem with the language, using credit, including for student loans and FAFSA application? Do you have an issue with that language? Well, it's her, it's, I mean, it's her concept, so you can vote on it one way or the other, but it's her, I, I'm trying to work with, with the concept of getting student loans in to this language explicitly. Do you have a problem with the explicitness of it?
It may. Yes.
Okay.
With the explicitness of it in terms of it being stated within the standard, but it definitely could be included as part of the learning objectives and the performance indicators and targets that should be a part of the assessment of acquisition of the standard.
Okay. And what is the problem with it being included in the label for the standard? Well, fair enough. I mean, so if you don't wanna put FAFSA in, you don't have to put FAFSA in, but I, I'm, I'm talking about really the concept of student loans. Isn't that what you're talking about?
FAFSA and student loans, yeah, that's, that's what I would say. And if, if it changes, then it can change, just like, and if anything else changes, it can change. I mean, that, we just, we just voted last month on changing, um, policy because things changed. So ain't no thing.
So, using, using, um, using credit, including, uh, student loans and application.
So do.
Therefore. Yes, please.
Thoughtfully, just, when you just read the standard for the, you read a, like, a small description, including, I wouldn't wanna say stu- student financial aid assistance, which cover all of that. which cover all of that, right?
This would be PF8, FAFSA and student loans, and we could let, let it be to this little square.
Yeah, yeah. I'm just trying to include it without having this.
Yep.
I'm trying to be helpful.
It's, Ms. Snyder, at the end of the day, it's yours to, it's yours to word. I, I was trying to get us to some common language.
I would just say, a motion to amend, add PF8, and just write FAFSA and student loans.
PF8 or PF4?
I'm sorry, but, yes, section 8, right? There's, how many subsections are under PF4?
I was just guessing.
Okay, I thought you were looking.
So it's under PF4?
Yes, it's under PF4. FAFSA and student loans.
Okay. Are we at the standard level or the substandard level? Because if we're at the substandard level, you're going to actually have to look at the sta- the substandards and determine what, what the enumeration is.
So it would be a substandard under PF4?
Add to the last one. Whatever the last one is, add a number, add a, add a one.
And the language is exactly that people are going to be voting on?
Correct.
I, I'm, I'm writing it down. Tell me the language.
FAFSA and student loans.
Very good. Thank you.
And that's like part A of?
So it, it would be the, the, the last substandard, if you, if you will. Thank you very much, Ms. Snyder. This is offered. Is there a, is there a second? There's a second. Do you accept it as a friendly amendment?
We've, we've already voted on that amendment.
Yeah, we voted on it.
Yeah, that's a friendly amendment.
This is a new motion.
This is a new.
This is a new event.
It is. I second that emotion. Sorry, a little Motown reference. Very little Motown reference. We have a motion, we have a second. We've had some measure of discussion pre-motion, pre, pre-second. Is there additional discussion? Yes, please.
So I'm in favor overall, whether it be the way that Board Member Snyder is suggest- suggesting, or the way that MDE has suggested. But I would suggest, or my suggestion would, was going to be just having it blanket, you know, student loans, because there's also private student loans, not just the federal student loans. So you have Sally Mae and other private student loans that are a, a huge issue too, so that they can learn and let the focus be, because we think so much of the FAFSA process when we think about student loans, but it's much bigger than that, broader than that.
The, the amendment was FAFSA and student?
Scholarships.
So all things considering, I, I imagine that's an umbrella, if you will.
Right. Fair enough. But, but Mr. Bullock notes that it's not simply student loans, it's more broadly student aid, student loans fitting, nesting inside of student aid. Are you comfortable with the student aid?
How about FAFSA, student loans, and student aid?
FAFSA is student assistance. It's a
FAFSA is the application for it.
But it's all financial assistance for it. And then there are other avenues. There are private banks. There, you want to make sure that they have an understanding about what they're signing off on when they go to college. That is all student financial assistance.
100%. So FAFSA, student loans, and student aid covers all of that, right? Unless you would word it differently.
What he's saying is redundant.
Yeah, just call it all, it's, FAFSA would be included, student financial assistance.
It's all student.
So then we'll just leave it FAFSA and student loans? And call the question on the amendment?
Is skinny, because student loans doesn't include grants, for example. It doesn't include work-study, for example.
We're just saying, call it student financial assistance, and FAFSA would be included.
Scholarships that might have something to do with it.
Student financial assistance is not the same as a student loan. Those two things are very different, right?
Student loans are underneath financial assistance, are underneath student financial assistance. Ms. Lipton?
Okay. Having spent the nearly part of a decade dealing with this issue, the filling out of FAFSA is not the problem. What I would be much more interested in is counseling on students not to take out the private loans that most private programs will push on students. Getting the student to complete FAFSA is the, the least of the worries. It's much more concerning that people and their parents are getting pushed to signing on the dotted line, taking out private loans to pay for private educational certifications, and then having to pay them back without having the job to actually pay it back at exorbitantly high interest rates.
So not, just to respond to that, and to make sure we're in compliance with the law when we're considering if you'll support the amendment. And again, this is not stating any personal beliefs about student loans through the government versus student loans through a private entity. I'm not stating any value-added proposition here, but that it says, subject content, area, expectations, or guidelines must not include attitudes, beliefs, or value systems that are not essential in the legal, economic, or social structure of our society. So we might agree with that, but that's not something we can teach. They have to make that decision for themselves. So if I'm putting an amendment on the table, I would still say, if we want to make sure that student aid is part of it, then we would separate it out. I think FAFSA, student loans, and student aid, and/or just FAFSA and student loans, and the student loans encapsulate or umbrella all of the different options of student loans.
Fair enough. So thank, thank you, Ms. Lipton, Ms. Snyder, Dr. Pugh.
And just to Board Member Bullock's point, it says the four types of financial aid, grants, work-study, loans, and scholarships. So I think we agree with what you're saying. We just want to make sure that it's comprehensive enough where we don't have to spell out everything.
So maybe we include all of those things and the FAFSA. So FAFSA, student loans, grants, you know, if you want to repeat it, we can.
Grants, work-study, loans, and scholarships.
Yeah.
But I, so my, and then my other question is, Dr. Chapman, did you say the way, the direction that we're going in, adding it as a subsection is the way that you would you think that that wouldn't slow down the process? Or in the objectives?
So the way that we are, the way that it's being discussed to be added, we have the overarching standard. But then below, so for each, each of those, there could be like a 4.1, 4.2, 4.3, and that's where they are, they are definitely included and then more granularly spelled out.
Okay.
So do you feel that this is changing content, or do you just feel that this is changing labels?
Not changing content. It, it would be expanding upon labels. It would be adding to.
Right. So, so we're talking about content that would otherwise be included?
Yes.
This is not, this is not about the change in content. It's rather about the change in labeling for the board?
Yeah.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Yeah.
So we have a, we have a motion, we have a second, we've had some discussion. Is there any other discussion on the motion to amend?
Just making sure, is there a friendly amendment on the table then?
There's no, it is not a friendly amendment, it is a freestanding amendment.
Okay.
Okay? And I appreciate that clarification, because I aired earlier. So it's, it's good to make that, it's good to make that clear at this point. So we have a motion, we have a second. Do you want to read it?
I just want to make sure. What I have is including FAFSA and student loans.
You're going to read the entirety of it. Read it so that people know what they're voting on.
Okay. And amend, to amend PF4 titled, Using Credit, Including FAFSA and Student Loans.
And to add what Pam suggested.
Yeah. She was asking, is there a friendly amendment to her?
This.
So we're going to add all four of those verbiages, too? I would suggest doing it the way that Mr. Bullock said, but if not, we
I'm going to roll with this. Let the districts handle.
Okay.
It's not to the title, it's to a subcategory, so you've got to change that. It's not to the title, but it's to
PF4 Using Credit in a subsection, including FAFSA and student loans.
It would be a new substandard, which says?
Including FAFSA and student loans.
And whatever Pam said.
Scholarships and grants.
And hopefully that's all the
Work-study.
Work-study, I'm sorry. Okay. To amend PF4 titled, Using Credit, subsection, including FAFSA, student loans, scholarships, work-study, and grant, or grants, excuse me.
Go for the question.
Hold on.
Yes?
Yes.
We're agreeing, okay.
Okay. We have a, we have a friendly amendment to the, that the mover has accepted.
Seconder has too.
The seconder has accepted. Is there any more discussion? Hearing none. If we could have a roll-call vote on the motion to amend.
Bullock?
Sure.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
And Tilly?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. And could I have a?
One more motion. Thank you. This is the process we need to do with the entire personal financial literacy content, area, expectations. So just one more opportunity to move to table them before we vote on them, to take the time that we need to with each one of these.
We have a motion to table. Do we have a second?
Score and a
Very good. We have a motion and a second to, to table. If we could have a roll-call vote on Ms. Snyder's motion to table.
Bullock?
Negative.
Lipton?
No.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
No.
Pugh?
No.
Robinson?
No.
Snyder?
Yes.
Tilly?
No.
Motion fails.
We have a base motion on the table as amended twice. If we could have a roll-call vote, please, on the base motion with the two amendments nested underneath it, please.
Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
No.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
No.
Tilly?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Board. We, thank you, presenters. We appreciate it. We appreciate your forbearance and your resilience.
Thank you.
It is 3:24. The next item on today's agenda is a presentation on approval of nominations to the Special Education Advisory Committee, or SEAC. Each year, the State Board of Education is asked to approve nominations to the Special Education Advisory Committee. SEAC is seeking to fill the following vacancies: eight delegates, seven alternates, and three member-at-large members due to expired or incomplete terms. There are 18 vacancies. We welcome our presenters, Dr. Scott Kennigschnet, Deputy Superintendent B. 20 System and Student Transitions, Ms. Terri Rink, who is there, a virtual Ms. Terri Rink, the Director of the Office of Special Education. This is a presentation to the Board. Vote for approval of the nominees is on the agenda. Dr. Kennigschnet and Ms. Rink, good afternoon.
Thank you, Dr. Rice, and thank you, Board, for allowing us to present to you this afternoon and ask for your support and approval of our nominations to SEAC. Also, we'd like to recognize Terri Pettit. Terri works with SEAC on a daily and weekly basis and monthly basis and coordinates the activities of the Special Education Advisory Committee. For our new Board members, the Special Education Advisory Committee is a, a committee that is required under IDEA to advise the Board on all things special education. 51% of its membership has to be either an individual with a disability or be a parent of a student with a disability. So we come to you on a yearly basis, asking you to approve our nominations. As Dr. Rice said, there are 18 folks that we are asking for you to approve this afternoon. Eight of those people are delegates that represent an organization. There are 24 organizations represented on SEAC. That information was provided to you in Attachment A. Attachment B are the names of the individuals we're seeking for you to approve. And Attachment C are individual biographical resumes of each of those 18 folks. And so would certainly answer any questions you might have, but would look for you to approve our nominations. I do want to mention, we ask for, thank you, we ask for Board Member nominations. A Board Member can nominate somebody at any time. And Board Member Tilly nominated Angie Smith, and I got a chance to meet Angie last week at SEAC. She is one of the member-at-large nominees. And she will bring a fantastic perspective to SEAC, because she's very involved in so many initiatives in her community, so.
Thank you, Dr. Kennigschnet. If we could have a motion to move these nominees? Thank you, Ms. Tilly. We appreciate that motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? Please.
I hate to ask, where is Attachment B? Attached to the superintendent's memo of June 13th.
So you should have received a memo from Dr. Rice?
Today?
This should have all been in your board packet, I believe. We also provided information to you in a board brief, I believe, a week or two ago.
It was a week ago, I think.
But in a board brief?
I think so.
All of the listings were, they were, because they had been sent, they weren't attached to the memo, to the agenda.
Okay, because we don't have a board packet per se. I mean, it was, can you tell me which email that was? The, the fourth?
That I'm finding it for.
I'm trying to find it real quick. I'm sorry.
It was.
He spoke about it on the fourth. I don't see the attachments.
It's
It's in the body of the email, on the fourth, but I don't see the attachments.
It's
Oh, the names are on the, in the?
Yes.
In the background?
There we go.
Is it at the link?
Oh, it just said, oh, there's a section here. I don't, I don't see any names on the fourth. I thought, duh. I mean, I guess I just, I'd like to see the list in the background. I just don't see it. I'm sorry.
Tom, if you click on the link where it says
No, that was just how to apply.
If you go, right, if you go to that page and then scroll down to 2022, 23 Membership List and click on that, it'll tell you who's on the committee.
But is that the, I'm looking for who we're voting on today, not who's on the committee before today.
Oh, wow.
But I appreciate that, but I, yeah, that's the membership list currently for today. So can we make copies?
Can we go to like the next item so that we can, that I can ask for that to be done?
We're going to we're going to put a pin in this issue. We're going to be back to this. We're going to move on. We're going to get copies so that people are able to see these and move forward. Thank you very much. Yes?
I think in your memo, though, it says, SEAC has all but one required member, and that Tiffany's recommendation is the replacement for that one member. So I read that as saying that the list on the, on the webpage was accurate, with the exception of that one member. Is that wrong?
We're, we're going to see We're going to see clarification. Terri Pettit is going to be helping
I took, I interpreted it.
That's what I read.
Can I add that I attended the last meeting, and Terri invited me to come out and speak here in Lansing, and it's just an amazing group of people. I think it's over 50 members that are part of
Okay.
And had a, a nice-sized group in the room, and they were given plenty of information so that they can take back to their communities to talk about special needs issues. So it's, if you haven't been yet as a Board Member, I definitely suggest visiting. And they really want our support. So it, it's important to let them know that we support them. The work that they do, one of the things that they discussed was how it's all connected and how their, what they advise on comes back to us, so that they know that their work is being heard, so.
Okay.
Great group.
Thank you very much for putting a pin in that. We'll be back to it soon. We're at the Report of the President. We're at the Report of the President.
So just a listing of some of the activities since we last met. I had the opportunity to visit Bentley Community Schools, which is in Grand Blank, Michigan, and speak with high school students on a project that they launched on May sixteenth called Elevating Student Voice. And what they did is brought together four schools from across the state and just wanted to share some of their anecdotal findings. And then after I left, they shared some of the findings that they, that they, that came up in the survey that they did. And they want to continue this work, so I would love to have them be able to come and present to, to this body. They talked about the differences as well as the similarities across the schools that they visited. They talked about how COVID has impacted their education, but just broader education issues, but from a student voice. And what was really unique, again, is that they were the students who actually put together this, this project. And they're, and I remember Grand Blank Detroit Schools, and I can't remember the other schools that were apart, but would love to have them come before us. Also wanted, also attended the Mackinac Policy Conference, and Mitch and I were there. Marshall was there, Board Member Bullock was there as, but probably in your official, your work capacity, but we saw you there. And I'll let them add more about that. While there, had the opportunity to speak during a town hall, which was a virtual town hall put on by Detroit Parent Network, Appearance on Policy Town Hall. I think a couple of, maybe a couple of Saturdays ago, was able to attend the Black Male Educators Gala, which was a very well-attended event. It was absolutely beautiful, and that was held at the Charles Wright Museum. And of course, the purpose of BMEA, Black Male Educators, alliances to increase black male educators in the classroom. Also had the opportunity to attend the Alpha Scholarship Ball, and that was in Lansing, Michigan, where scholarships were given out to young deserving students. And then on this Saturday, I attended my first, first time ever, the Motor City Pride Event, which, again, was an amazing time, opportunity to learn so much and just walk around and meet with different organizations that were there providing support to members of the LGBTQ+ community. Then I want to acknowledge that this is both Gun Violence Awareness Month and June is LGBTQ+ Pride Month. And just thinking about today and just being reminded that unfortunately there are still those who are focused on banning books that help our young people to be seen and more emphasis there than on banning assault weapons. And that in and of itself is a violent act. I do, I too want to raise, I heard someone raise this, and I want to raise it as well, that the Southern Poverty Law Center has designated Moms for Liberty as a hate group. And they're, in their Hate Extremism Report. Other organizations or bodies that have been listed in that report include the Ku Klux Klan. You know, and I do find it troublesome that we have people who continue to manufacture a moral crisis, present false truths, and perpetuate hate and division. And to want to erase a people, to want to erase a history of a people, black people, existence of those who are LGBTQ+ is troublesome. And while I wish that I could mute them and in the way that they attempt to mute and silence so many marginalized people and groups within our communities, within this state. But we are people who know that we have to be defenders of democracy. And we know that a bedrock of democracy is freedom of expression. And it is imperative that we do protect our democracy. And I'll just end by saying that we have to continue to take action against violence, grow to learn more about how we can do more to take action against gun violence, and just want to wish everyone a happy Pride Month.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Report of the State Superintendent will be brief. I want to just provide a few shout-outs. First, thanks to Principal Rex Vernon and the staff of the Michigan School for the Deaf for last week's graduation in Flint. Board Member Dr. Judy Pritchett, Deputy Superintendent Dr. Scott Kennigschnet, Special Education Director Terri Rink, and Special Education Assistant Director Rebecca McIntyre all attended lunch, a tour, and graduation at the Michigan School for the Deaf last Friday. I want to thank Camp Tuzmahida and its staff for hosting the Board and four staff members at Camp T on May sixteenth. That was a terrific opportunity for Board and staff to learn about the camp and about the work of the camp relative to the supports of the blind and visually impaired. I want to thank LEAs and ISDs that applied for our Grow Your Own grants to develop support staff into teachers. Macomb ISD Superintendent, Mr. Mike Devault, mentioned Macomb had won one of those grants. He did not mention that it was a four-million-dollar competitive grant award. He also did not mention that his was one of eighty grants that were awarded just a few weeks ago on Grow Your Own for support staff to become teachers in the state. And we look forward to our second round of grant opportunities in just two weeks. So in just a couple of weeks, we're going to be putting out another opportunity for local school districts, ISDs and LEAs across the state to compete for those Grow Your Own grant opportunities. And many of them have already reached out and have asked us questions about, so how do we improve upon our previous grant applications? So we expect stronger applications from some moving forward. And we're looking forward to distributing more of those Grow Your Own funds because as we distribute more Grow Your Own funds, we grow more of our own. We have more support staff to become teachers. Superintendent Devault, Dr. Fly, mentioned not only Grow Your Own support staff to teachers, but the young people were in Students to Teachers Grow Your Own programs. And those are really enormously impactful. You can just hear the energy and excitement from the young people, some of whom have known from jump that they were going to be teachers, but some of whom just realized, almost epiphanously, that they were, they were teachers in the making. And so it's exciting to see the harvesting, if you will, of our Grow Your Own programs across the state. I want to share best wishes to Dr. Kennigschnet, who will be assuming the position of Superintendent of Clinton County RISA next month. He has been a P-20 Deputy Superintendent for the last five years. We appreciate his leadership, and we wish him well in his new endeavors. He informs me that his new endeavors are in some ways his old endeavors because it's his, it's his home RISA, if you will, and a RISA of which he is tremendously familiar. So thank you so much. I want to welcome Jeannie Justice to the Michigan Department of Education. Jeannie will be working with Liz Evans in the Board Office. I also want to dovetail off of two mentions that Dr. Pugh raised earlier. To all in the LGBTQ+ community we see and wish you a happy Pride Month. And to those who celebrate Juneteenth, happy early Juneteenth, which takes place next month, next week, rather. So we thank you. We thank you all for respecting all of us. It is about respect for all of us, and that begins with acknowledging and seeing each and every one of us. The next item on today's agenda is a presentation on Report of the Teacher of the Year. Ms. Nanette Hansen, the current Michigan Teacher of the Year, is a third-grade teacher at Lemur Elementary School in Escanaba Area Public Schools. Nancy Hansen is joined by Mr. Carl Brownlee, who has the absolute coolest tie in the entire room. But more importantly, is the Region Ten Teacher of the Year, who teaches at Fisher Magnet Upper Academy, where he teaches seventh and eighth grade social studies. Mr. Brownlee is a former U.S. Marine and Gulf War veteran who started his teaching career with the Detroit Public Schools in 1998. He earned his bachelor's degree from Campbell University, a master's degree in public administration from the University of Michigan, and a master's degree in education from Mary Grove College. Mr. Brownlee is in his twenty-third year of teaching and is a member of the Michigan Association for Computer Users and Learning, a Teach 313 ambassador, and a member of I Am In Demand, an organization that connects black men with opportunities to become educators, mentors, and volunteers. We welcome Ms. Hansen and Mr. Brownlee to present their report.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
And, I mean, he has a couple more years to add to that. How many years is, this is your-
September would be my twenty-fifth year.
Twenty-fifth.
Okay. All right, it's been a long year, hasn't it?
And I teach first grade. I teach first grade. The best grade. I want to make sure that you guys. I teach the best grade. This is a bittersweet meeting for me, as it's my very last meeting as MTOE for 2023. And it's my last one to present with my fellow, fellow MTOE. But I'm so glad to be here every single month. I was especially glad to be here with those young people that are coming in as the Teacher Academy, and I was glad to hear all of those great things that are coming to recruit these diverse, amazing kids that are going to be in front of our kids in the near future. And I'm so excited to see them. Additionally, hearing about 3P and the STEM work that is taking place that is going to be helping us reimagine a better educational system that is comprehensive and includes all types of learners and learning styles. And today, we're going to be talking about supporting our students when they are faced with a barrage of different standardized tests, when they are not standardized people. But we are going to start by turning it over to Carl so he can further introduce himself.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Superintendent Wright, Board Members. I truly appreciate this opportunity to be in front of you to present. And also thank you because I was not able to present last month, and I appreciate you allowing me to come back and present this month. Before I actually start, I'd like to give a very quick congratulatory shout-out to Ms. Candace Jackson, the Regional Teacher of the Year for Region Ten. She's coming in while I'm going out, but she's also the Michigan Teacher of the Year. And I would definitely wish, I definitely wish her the best. I know she's going to do a phenomenal job, and it is just good to see her following in good footsteps. I know Nanette is going to take care of her. So if you can see, I've been teaching twenty-five years, and my philosophy in the classroom is simple. I believe that children really don't care what you say until they see you care. And in the words of the beloved reader Pearson, "Every child deserves a champion or needs a champion." And I take that mindset into the classroom with me every day. I love these young people as if they were my child. Now, some of you have to love at a distance, and it's okay. You plant a seed, and you hope that someone else can water and germinate, and they're going to be positive, productive young people. I have prior service, as mentioned earlier. I think next to marrying my wife, this is probably one of the best decisions I've made in my life, and that was joining and serving in the Marine Corps. I have learned a lot, traveled a lot, and just the life experiences of being involved in the military has helped me out tremendously. So before we start, what I would like to do, there was a saying that one of my cohorts posted, and it said that when life starts, when you start making plans. And I want to make a quick PSA to everyone. I'm ten weeks post-op of having surgery for prostate cancer. And so to the gentlemen in here, if you're forty or over, I encourage you to get checked.
Absolutely.
But to the women in here, I strongly encourage you to speak to the loved ones in your, in your life, the men forty or over, and encourage them because we, men just, we don't go to the doctor like we're normally supposed to go. But maybe you can give those words of encouragement so that he may say, okay, well, let me go. You can't put it on the honey-do list. You have to be in that, you need to go get checked. Okay? Because sometimes, I had no symptoms. I had no symptoms. But while I'm going through this journey, I haven't gotten to ring the bell yet. I think I have some more months. I'm about seventy-five percent. But as I've gone through this journey, support, speaking of support for our young people, support was and has been tremendous for me. From the MDE members, Ms. Robos, Shelby, Lee, the comments and the support from my students, from school staff, obviously family, my cohorts. Nanette has just been absolutely tremendous, always checking on me, sending little notes, telling me to keep my head up. And those things helped because when you go through this journey and going back to my military service, being in the Marine, you go towards the bad stuff when everyone else is going the opposite way. Not to marginalize or discount what I was dealing with, but I did not see what I was dealing with as a major issue because of my mindset at that time. And even today. But when folks say, hey, how are you doing? Doing okay, and just checking on you, that support helped me out tremendously. So I do want to thank you for that. And now I'll defer back to Nanette so we can start.
So we want to create a stronger support system for our students during standardized testing. In a perfect world, Carl and I talked about lessening or doing away with standardized testing, but we don't live in that world. I teach first grade, and the problem that we see, starting at the very young age of first grade, is that standardized tests don't really measure the things that you can't see, like the soft skills that kids have. And it doesn't show all the things that they are. For example, if I have a student that comes to me who's crawling around on the floor and maybe eating a pencil or having a hard time socializing, my very first priority is not getting them to pass that standardized test. My very first priority is building a community where they feel safe and loved and valued so that they can come to a place where they can sit in a chair and they can socialize with their kids and maybe sit down and read a book. So it's so important that students, even at the young age of first grade, know why it's so important to, to test them. What is it showing them? What is it going to do for them? See, at this age, we're trying to instill a love of learning. And often with this standardized testing, we're instilling a fear of failure, a feeling of inadequacy. And that's not really what we want to embed in their, in their brains at this young age. High-stakes testing commonly begins in third grade, but I'm doing it NWEA testing in first grade, and I have seen firsthand, firsthand, students filled with anxiety and dread, stomach aches, belly aches, worry that I'm going to be disappointed in them, that their parents will be disappointed in them. And, and they just worry about- And they just worry about all of these things that are not really necessary in 1st grade. You know, these standardized tests are supposed to be used as a diagnostic tool to drive instruction, often though, it's tied to teacher evaluations, and it feels punitive. And that's not what we really want. Standardized testing seems to ignore the reality that kids are at various stages of developmental and emotional maturity. I might have two 6-year-olds in my class, but one might be really heavily taxed at home, lots of trauma going on. One might have a mom and dad, or a family unit that is really into education. These two 6-year-olds are not the same, and they're not ready for that same standardized test. And no matter what I do in the classroom, they're just not going to be ready. We have no opportunity to nurture the learning process, no chance to review these outcomes for our kids. And when the kids are taking the tests, we can't even help them. They're filled with anxiety. They want to know what to do, and you have to just say, "I'm sorry, babe, take your best guess. Babe, take your best guess. I can't help you." And we can't really even ease their anxiety. Some students experience anxiety, irritability, panic, frustration, they cry, they get headaches, and they lose that love of learning. There was a study done 2011 by Laura Kearns, a professor at St. Francis Xavier University, and she said that high school students who failed the standardized test experienced something called shock of test failure. And what happened with this is that these high-achieving kids, even often AP classes and dual-enrolled kids, felt like they were failures across the board, and it spilled over into their daily life. And they thought, "Well, now, I did so horrible on this standardized test, now I really have no confidence that I can achieve in other places." And so, these are the things that we're seeing as teachers, especially in the classroom, that are leading kids to not feel like they need to be doing their best job on this because they already have given up, because they're not achieving on this. We need to make sure that there's a system of supports for students' mental health, for their well-being, in place before they're going to be taking these tests. Remember, lots of kids, even in my own district, they come from drug homes, they have other things that they are very focused on, and it is not taking this standard test. So, when they come to us, and we know we have to give them the standardized test, we need to have a system of supports in place to know that they're going to be okay, that they realize that this is just one measure that does not define the rest of their life, and it doesn't determine who they're going to become.
So, some of the recommendations that we came up with, or just thought of based on our experience in the classroom, is to provide clear communication with the parent regarding the testing. We have to build a village concept. It can't be segmented where this side, and we have to work together. Answering students' questions, telling them the purpose of the test, letting them know test is not punitive towards them. Do your best, and don't worry about where you fall. It's not a high-stake test. You're going to move on. Encourage positivity around the testing, and hope that they don't just flush that information, once they study for it, take the test, and then dump the information. We want that information to retain in their mind and use it. So, health is wealth. And being a person on the journey that I'm on, I can attest to that. Health is wealth. The biggest challenges that I've just seen in the classrooms toward students preparing for these tests are insufficient sleep, poor nutrition, and apathy. The apathy, I would also say, is probably connected with test fatigue, possibly. But these are the things that we're going to touch on very quickly. Lack of sleep. And this is a battle that the CDC reports that 55% of middle school students sleep fewer than six hours. I would argue that that's probably higher. I've had young people come into the classroom, "Hey, I had a GTA competition last night, went to bed 2:00, 3:00." Roblox competition, Madden competition, FaceTiming on the phone. So, I would say that percentage might be higher. High school is, it's 70%, but I would also argue that that definitely, for high schoolers, in my opinion, would be higher, that they are not getting the amount of sleep that they need to prepare to take these tests and be prepared for them. Scientists, if you can see, scientists have found that sleep or lack of sleep impacts the ability to learn, recall, memorize, recite. We already know, if we're in this board meeting, if I didn't get enough sleep, and I'm crashing, I gotta get something to get me up. Well, the young people, they can't come into the classroom, in our classrooms, with, you know, big thing of latte, you know, ready to go, and they chugging down coffee. They can't do it. But they have to get their sleep. I just try and encourage them, "Get your eight hours of sleep. You need it." Steps that we recommend, setting a sleep schedule. I try and encourage my young people when we start back school, for them not to go to sleep after school, because their bodies are not ready. And also, prior to that, before coming to school, the parent or guardian, get them ready to go to bed about three weeks before they come to school. Because if you're still staying up, you're still staying up, and you're coming to school, now your whole schedule is off track. So, setting the sleep schedule. And I just tell them, "Look, try and stay up as long as you can during the day, because if you fall asleep at 3:00, when you get home from school, we get out at 2:30, you're going to wake up 9:00, 10:00. Now you're up, and now you got that cycle going on." Limiting the use of devices at night. My daughter didn't have a television in her room until she, I believe, was in high school or junior year. The rationale was, when I'm asleep, the TV can easily get cut on. They got the remote, cut it off, you know? Or video games, phones, try and limit that. The average young person deals with digital media 40 hours or more a week. And so, it's hard to combat, but I think that's somewhere we need to start. And just having rigorous discussions with our young people, why you need quality sleep. Also, robocalls to the parents, let them know we're testing, we need your assistance, get them in the bed, get them prepared, get them ready. Flexible test schedules. If you have a young man or young woman who comes in, you can see they're tired, they're not ready to test, maybe we can do you in the afternoon, if there is some type of a flex scheduling there. One of the biggest disappointments I have, when I have to proctor a test, is when that young person comes in, opens up the laptop, answer maybe one or two questions, and they've nose-die, head down, and I have to constantly, "Hey, sit up," you know? And so, test is 30, 40 questions, they're done in two minutes, because we're just clicking now. The only thing I can say is, hopefully you got some of them right, because my name is on that, and there's nothing I can do about it. So, when a child comes into my classroom during normal class, if they're tired, I'll tell them, "Go in the back, put your head down, we'll catch up tomorrow." Because I've had young people, people, my family were arguing last night, something else tragic may have happened, or they didn't do their due diligence and go to bed, and they chose the Madden or GTA over going to bed. And so, we try and work with them that way. Poor nutrition, sugar and salt. I just cringe in the morning when I see my young people coming in. Bag of Takis, if you're not familiar with those, those are just dipped in salt and just hot, yeah, just, and then they guzzle it down with sugar. And then, they're supposed to come to the classroom and be productive, and it doesn't work. They're crashing mid-class, if not earlier, they're crashing. And it's been proven, hunger can lead to them missing school, repeating the grades, performing, not performing as well on tests and standardized tests. Suggestions or recommendations that thought of were, and this we actually did at my school at one time, we had fresh fruit during standardized testing. Apples, vegetable trays, where they had celery sticks, carrots, little ranch dressing, where they could have it while they're testing. It keeps them occupied. I don't know if that's going to translate to them doing well on tests, but they're up, they're engaged while they're testing, as opposed to head down, I'm just clicking. Healthier selections, and that's out of our scope and realm, for breakfast programs. There are things that I see in the cafeteria that they're eating, that, again, I'm just like, that's not conducive to them doing well on a test, or just being able to function in the classroom. And I would also say incentives, to show them about healthy eating. I try and model to them as much as I can about healthy eating. They won't see me in the hallway with a bag of chips, they won't see me, if they see me, I'm eating fruit. And I'm not going to, I've been a vegetarian over 10 years, but I do not try and say, "Hey, that's nasty, what you eating." But if the discussion and the dialogue opens, "Why, Mr. Brownlee, why are you always eating an apple?" Now I can share, and I can then say, "This is why I do that." Not to mention, I tell them, "I can't eat what you eat." And I hope you don't eat what you eat, because the ramifications will come as you get older, reap what you sow mentality. Okay? Our young people, diabetes type 1, type 2, asthma, the list is long of the health conditions and concerns that they're being faced with today because of what we're ingesting. And the last one I would say is, as I said earlier, previously, I believe that test fatigue is correlated with the apathy that we're starting to see with students on these standardized tests. Young people, obviously, they have more going on in their life, and we understand that. My wife is a Detroit detective, she works in SUV, Children Division. And fortunately, the things that she shares with me, you can see through that child's eye in the classroom, that if I'm doing a standardized test, and this other, these other things are going on in my life, this does not matter as much to me. They disconnect, I see it all the time, they disconnect from testing. They ask, "Mr. Brownlee, does this affect my grade?" The honesty is, no, it doesn't. Do your best. There's a disconnect. When I test in the classroom, they have multiple opportunities to test. You test, retest, the score, they can see the score. Or I'll tell them, "Go back, redo it," multiple times. When they test on a standardized test, they're not able to do that. And so, they don't, you don't see your score going up, if that makes sense? If I see I had a 40, this, a 30, now I have a 35, okay? Or higher, I'm more prone to try and have an incentive, because I see I'm going up, and it's my grade. I would say too many standards, too many questions. We give young people tests with 60 questions in middle school. I believe that's just, it's too much. It's too much, on one test. And it's broken down into two days, and then they'll go to another classroom, be it English or ELA, or maybe science, and then they're dealing with, so I'm dealing with 60 questions in each content area, I'm really, I'm really going to check out. I'm not going to try my hardest. Immediate feedback. When our young people take, again, tests in the classroom, they get immediate feedback. Go back, do it again. There's a pressure there from the teacher, from me. You need to do it again. But when they're taking the M-step, there's no pressure. I click through it, I'm done, Mr. Brownlee, that's it. And then we move on. So, some of the recommendations is to explain to them why this test is different from others. Check and see if a student is getting proper sleep and nutrition. Possibility, if we can, check to see if there are family issues that may be impacting that young person's performance. Check for signs of self-harm, also substance abuse, because unfortunately, a lot of young people are, and have access, where they're self-medicating now. We've had issues with young people with vapes, edibles, and us as adults, being that we're not custodial about what we are using, they get access to it, and they're doing all types of stuff with it. So, I would just say, these standardized tests, again, going back to what Nanette said, if there was a perfect scenario, a reduction in the amount of tests that they're given, I would also say that may help with teacher retention, it may help with teacher recruitment, that I don't have to worry about giving this multitude of standardized tests. If I went by what my Iowa test scores said, my trajectory of life should be like this, as opposed to the things that I've been able to accomplish and do. And I see that with a multitude of my students also, who have blown the meat, just destroyed the NWEA, the PSA, just, you shake your head, like, what happened? And now, when I see them, they're flight attendants, I have some pilots out there. I have a young man who was actually flying the plane, Tom Cruise was pretending to fly. He's doing it for real, in the Air Force. And so, we see the growth and the maturity of these young people. And as Nanette said, it just shows a small part of what they can do, and not the total package of what they are. And so, with that, again, I appreciate you allowing me to speak before you today. Thank you so much, Superintendent Wright, for allowing me to come back today, this month, and speak, and to the rest of the board members, thank you.
We appreciate your presentation, and you're going to have to teach me how to tie one of those bow ties. I may ask for one in scarlet and gray instead.
Yeah. You can do a garter, a gortier.
Board Member, questions or comments for our Teachers of the Year? Yes?
I just want to thank you for all the work you're doing. You must be doing outstanding work to be Teacher of the Year for your region.
Thank you.
And the presentation, I truly understand, I work with a lot of young people mentoring programs, scouts, the schools, you know, the fathers, dads' club, but those techniques that you talked about, the main ones for me are nutrition and sleep. And we, as the dad clubs, adopted some things that we all were doing. I made my kids check their electronic devices in at 8:00. And then, as they got older, and they was, you know... And then as they got older and they was, you know, it wasn't being as, uh, wasn't being enforced as much, I would just go outside, turn off the wifi.
Oh, yeah. Hit the wifi. Hit the wifi.
To this day, no one has a television in their room. Like, so they, they've grown accustomed to not.
Right, right. And, and you don't miss what you don't have.
No, nobody. It messes with your sleep. Sleep is bedroom is for sleep, slumber, rest, relaxation. All that other stuff can happen in every other room in the house. But nutrition, growing up, all the kids coming to school who are from different backgrounds, food deserts, family life, all of that stuff plays a part in their ability to pay attention and learn. And, and so I just commend you for having to deal with all of that. Some kids told us earlier, the kids are something special, so. I agree.
Thank you, Mr. Roble. Um, other board members? Doctor Pugh?
A quick question, and I know Nanette, you're gonna get to your segment too, but thank you for, for, um, sharing with us today. One of, something that came up a while ago, uh, someone was telling me uh, that there really needs to be emphasis or measurement that's placed on the correlation of the amount of time that it takes a student to finish a test and then how, how they do. And you triggered that for me, uh, and wondering if we've, if there's anything that's measuring that. So you gave the example of someone coming in, putting their head down, maybe just doing B B B B B. You know, and being done in two minutes. And just wondering if there's any, if there is any measurements that are done.
So it's a, it, it's a longer conversation. I, I think you're, you're talking about from, uh, on M step?
Yeah, well, testing period.
There's so many, but I do know, um, iReady, e- e- even though we, we use that, um, um, it's not standardized, but when they do iReady, there are buffers in there where they can't, you know, there are some test design where they cannot just go and click straight through.
N W E A will tell you if there's a rapid guesser. And I have it up on the screen and it will say, and it will say, oh, like so-and-so is a rapid guesser. I'll be like, Emmett, are you, are you doing your very best job right now? Oh, yeah. Oh, yes, I am. You know, and so you can see it on the screen. And so then you can sort of say, do you need to take a se- a second? Do you need to take a break? You know, and, you know, again, you're talking about six, seven and eight-year-olds. And so it's, it's a lot, you know? But N D B, N W E A has that built in.
Other, um, Ms. Tilly? Thank you very much, Doctor Pugh.
Thank you so much for the presentation. Um, you know, we talk about, we talked about pre-COVID, what our children were facing with standardized testing. And so, um, post-COVID, have you seen it? Because it's, it's a, it's a different world and our students went through a lot during COVID. Have, do you see things being much worse for them trying to manage and navigate doing the testing? And for you, um, you know, the self-care tips, those recommendations are awesome and, and those things are vital whether you're having testing or not. Um, but how, how is the parent engagement around that? How has it been for you?
Um, as I said, the village concept is not there. Um, it's more, um, we're, we're just fractured. Um, where the engagement that we're trying to get, um, and it's not all parents. Um, it's kind of like parent-teacher conference where you have those students that you don't need to see. They always come to parent-teacher conference, but the ones you need to have an, an, an engagement with and a conversation with, you never see. Or if you try and call, you, you get voicemail, you never get a return call. So, um, so I, I would say unfortunately, I have seen, uh, um, a, a, a deterioration between the young people where it's like, I don't really care if I pass this or not. Um, and that's hard to fight, um, when you're in a classroom and you're trying to encourage them, do your best. But if I can see, and I'm not trying to be, uh, um, disrespectful, but what they see in the world, that I can go and start an OnlyFans page and I can make money, or I can make money doing pranks on TikTok or on YouTube, my YouTube page, I'm getting paid two thousand or a thousand dollars to take risk with my life as opposed to coming into the classroom and trying to build some structure educationally where I can go out and, you know, maybe create another website. But, um, the challenges are, 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 are great. But we can still, and, and I, as I said, I see a lot after that maturity and they're doing, uh, some great things.
Thank you.
We appreciate your presentation. If, if, uh, if I recall correctly, you and I met four years ago.
Correct.
Um, and you are still in demand.
I appreciate it.
So, so we, we appreciate your leadership. Um, we appreciate your presentation today. Ms. Hanson, we appreciate your leadership, your presentation today. Uh, we're gonna miss you at the board table. Uh, but we're gonna welcome Ms. Candace Jackson to, to the board table, following in a transition.
At this time last year, I didn't know her. Now I consider this as being someone who I can call a friend or if I, um, you know, I, I, I need words of encouragement or if I, vice versa. Um, you know, that's just amazing how we, um, and, and, and that's all the, uh, uh, cohorts in our group. Um, because the challenges that I'm facing, there are others facing different challenges, but they're facing, uh, challenges at this time. And so we just kind of rally behind each other, um, be it a loss of a parent uh, or, um, other incidents that young people, uh, that we've, uh, experienced. So it's definitely been a, uh, a pleasure for me to work with and, um, had opportunity to be with Ms. Hanson and Nanette. And so I'm going to remove myself so you can do your presentation.
Thanks, Carol.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, I'm here today to give you my final wrap-up presentation, uh, of my year as Michigan Teacher of the Year. I'll share a little bit of my journeys over the last several months. I was able to go visit the Michigan School for the death. And I was very impressed by the staff and the students alike. I know you had mentioned that you went there for their grad, graduation festivities. I heard them share their concerns for conserving their deaf, deaf culture and providing a safe and positive environment for their kids to learn. They talked about much-needed updates and their vision for the future of their school. And I was very impressed with their ideas. Over the last year, I have shared my school visits and highlighted my adventures around the U P and the lower peninsula of Michigan at the end of each of my monthly board meetings. And I would like to share another short video that highlights all the places, teachers, students, classrooms and learning that I've been a part of over this last year. All of these people and places have inspired me and allowed me to see that they are keeping students at the heart of everything that they do, and that's their why.
You have made a difference. You have shaped our minds. You have changed the world, one child at a time. You have always been there in everything you do. I hope that you're as proud of me as I am proud of you. This song is for those who taught us right from wrong and taught us much more than their craft to help our minds grow strong. This song is for those who guide us through and through so that we can make a life for that we say thank you. You have made a difference. You have shaped our minds. You have changed the world, one child at a time. You have always been there in everything you do. I hope that you're as proud of me as I am proud of you. As I look back on my life and to the path within my reach, I hope I can change the life of those that I teach. I can make a difference. All I do is try, try to see a different world through the children's eyes.
Over this last year, I've worked with many professional advisory councils and groups, including Michigan Teacher Leadership Advisory Council, Special Education Advisory Council, the Governor's Educator Advisory Council, S E L and Children's Mental Health Network, C C S S O, National Teacher of the Year Program. And as I reflect on this last year, I can see how my lens has widened and expanded about education and teaching and its importance. Being part of these advisory councils, I felt as though I had opportunities to lend my voice to important educational issues that were very impactful. Impactful to me personally and impactful to this great profession of teaching. Working with the Special Education Advisory Council, Governor's Advisory Council and M T LAC and being able to act in an advisory capacity to the governor and to review and make recommendations regarding legislation that is important and relevant to Michigan's public education system helped me to see my value in this role as Michigan Teacher of the Year. And it helped me to use my voice and knowledge to identify and analyze best practices that are happening in the public school setting. I value the prioritization of education in Michigan and I appreciate Michigan's top ten initiatives. The importance of early education, childhood education, improving early literacy program and achievements, improving the health, safety and well-being of students, increasing graduation rates and increasing post-secondary credentials and providing adequate funding to, to provide these educational opportunities. I'm so very thankful that Michigan has squarely centered our students' social, emotional well-being and put in place financial supports that will continue to help support our needed students and their districts. As a teacher, I know the critical importance of building safe, positive, inclusive relationships in my classroom. The importance of providing a well-defined structure of supports and defined routine where all students can flourish and grow in their educational setting while also feeling safe and supported and accepted for their true authentic selves. I think that it is very important to allow teachers to have autonomy in their classroom to help their students to become who they're meant to become. We can do this by encouraging more diversity in the classroom and offering students the opportunity to have a diverse teaching population in their school districts. Allowing them to see a possibility model of who they can become someday. Exposing students to rich, diverse literature that allows them to see themselves reflected within the pages of books. But also allows them to see their differences, and I think it's so critical to their development. It allows students to see their place in the world and be, and build connections with others. We are trying to build empathetic humans who are critical problem solvers who can see the world using a lens that's wider than just themselves. Fred Rogers said, Mr. Rogers, "Look for the helpers. You will always find people who are helping." Teachers are the helpers. We are not the enemy. We are not here to be at the receiving end of political attacks and false narratives that are being perpetuated every single day. We are the helpers of other people's children. We cry, we lose sleep, we worry. We care so deeply about their successes and failures because there are kids too. We have lived through a pandemic and we saw the holes in the systems. An educational system that was not prioritizing every single student. A system that fell short. And now that we know, we can feel empowered to reimagine a system that lifts and supports all learners. And it is very important to me that we are teaching all students about the world around them and about our shared history, real history. It is very necessary for students to hear truths that resonate from the past so that they can make informed decisions about the future that they want to be part of. I know that while we're here in this boardroom, sometimes our emotions get the best of us as we discuss what we think is best for kids, and that's okay. But we have a responsibility as human beings to respect each other and treat each other with respect. I am so proud to be a Michigan educator and I feel grateful for the strides that Michigan has taken to help our students learn and grow and feel supported in that learning. I will continue to use my voice long after this role has ended for me to keep students at the heart of educational decision, decision-making. And just as I started off my year as MTOE with a quote from "The world needs more purple people", I would like to end with a small excerpt from "The world needs more purple schools". First grade teacher in me. I hope you can see it. But my school isn't just any plain old school in the universe. My school is a purple school. It's a place where lots of different people come together to mix their stories, their ideas and their smarts to make something special. Yep, just like when you mix red and blue together, you get purple. Our school is an important part of our city, which is an important part of our country, which is an important part of our world, which is an important part of our universe. Helping our schools helps all of us. And I just want to say, we have such a huge responsibility to help our schools and to help our kids because they are one of the most important places our kids go to become who they're going to become. I want to take this opportunity to thank all of you at this board table for welcoming me here and allowing me to speak about my passions each month. You have helped me to grow considerably as a teacher. I also want to take at this time to a special thank you to Jennifer Roble, Shelby Lee and my fellow teachers of the year for helping me to have just the best year ever. You are all simply the best. Thank you and have a wonderful summer.
Thank you.
Oh, you need me anymore?
You know what? We're, we're gonna, we're gonna end on that.
Okay.
That's beautiful. Thank you so much. We appreciate you. We appreciate your leadership, Ms. Hanson.
Thank you.
Um, Ms. Evans, if you could redistribute the, um, or distribute the, uh, the CAC nominations. To board members, um, what Ms. Evans is distributing. what Ms. Evans is distributing are the applications of the 18 nominees. Fifteen of those are coming to us from organizations, Dr. K. And so perhaps if you could help us from there. Fifteen from organizations, the three at large.
Sure. So, Appendix, excuse me. A are the list of 24 organizations that appoint a person to represent them and a delegate. And so as Dr. Rice indicates, 15 of the folks that you have biographies of are coming from organizations. So they've nominated those folks to represent them. The other three are members at large, and that's where board members have the opportunity to nominate folks if they so choose. Again, I referenced Board Member Tilly nominated Angie. And our other members at large can apply. And there are two others that applied that are listed in Appendix B. And so the total, 15 with the organizations, and then three members at large.
Very good. We'll give the board a little bit of time to take a look at the backgrounds of the nominees.
I think you already have a motion to approve, right? In a second.
We have a motion and a second, yes. One of the three at large was recommended by Board Member Tilly. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions? For that matter, any? Hearing and seeing none. If we could please have a roll call vote.
Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Tilly?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. K. Next item on today's agenda is state and federal legislative update, and always popular portion of the agenda. Mr. Marty Ackley, our Director of Public and Governmental Affairs, will lead the state and federal legislative update. Will follow with the, an SBE Legislative Committee update from Dr. Pritchett. And Dr. Robinson will follow with the 45-minute NASB report.
At least.
Thank you, Dr. Rice, and thank you, Dr. Kenneschneck. For a minute, I thought I was gonna have to follow Ms. Hanson, but you saved me from that. I appreciate that very much.
We weren't gonna let anybody have to do that.
Good. Thank you. So the legislature is busy at work. The fiscal year 2324 budget is being finalized with House and Senate Conference Committee members working together with the State Budget Office and the various departments to develop a final budget ready for passage by the end of June. As such, the committees are also meeting. They're getting ready to pass a flurry of bills before their recess at the end of June, before they go back and work in their districts and not here in Lansing. So I've got a few bills here that are moving that I think are interesting to note. One is school start date. Senate Bill 40, or House Bill 4671, would eliminate restrictions on the school start date, allowing schools to start before Labor Day without a waiver. It was reported out of the House Education Committee today. Disrupted education, there's a three-bill package in the House, was in the House Families, Children, and Seniors Committee to ensure quality educational opportunities for children in foster care. The committee took testimony on these bills last week from students who also presented at the state board in December. You might remember that. The department has been working with the sponsor and the committee on these bills to ensure that students experiencing disrupted learning get a quality education that leads to a high school diploma and beyond. These bills were reported out of committee earlier today. Pre-registration to vote, House Bill 4569 has been reported out of the House Elections Committee and would require the Department of Education to coordinate with the Secretary of State for a public outreach campaign for 16-year-old students to pre-register to vote. The bill would also require the department to ensure that registration materials are available to each public high school in the state. So those bills are on the House floor. It may be actually voted out this week. The Senate Education Committee heard testimony last week, Senate Bill 359, to allow for teachers and school administrators hired after September 1, 2019 at DPSED, Detroit Public Schools Community District, to collectively bargain and be no longer restricted to having their compensation based on a method that primarily considers job performance and job accomplishments. That bill was reported out of committee this afternoon. The House last week passed Senate Bill 90 that amends the state's Elliot Larson Civil Rights Act to prohibit discrimination based on traits historically associated with race, such as hair texture and protective hairstyles, such as braids, locks, and twists. This is the Crown Act, which the state board supported with a resolution back in March. The bill has now been sent to Governor Whitmer for his signature. I believe this will make Michigan the 23rd state in the nation to enact a Crown Act. Senate Bill 66 was passed, was reported out of the House Committee on Criminal Justice this morning and would require the department to work with experts on sexual assault and sexual harassment to develop age-appropriate information material related to sexual assault and harassment and make that material available to all schools that operate Grade 6 through 12, and require the school district to disseminate the informational material to each pupil in Grade 6 through 12 as well as providing each student the contact information of the district's Title IX Coordinator and the district's policies on sexual assault and harassment. Another bill was reported out of the Senate Civil Rights, Judiciary, and Public Safety today. It's House Bill, it's already passed the House. Came out of committee in the Senate today. Would prohibit, with some exceptions, a student from being suspended for more than 10 days or expelled based on the student's actions immediately preceding, following, or tied to an incident reported as a sexual assault. The Teacher and Counselor Reciprocity Bills are in the, that's Senate Bill 161 and 162. They passed the Senate 38-0. And those bills await passage on the House floor. And that is a quick rundown of the bills that got action this week. And of course, a lot of bills, a lot of other bills are on the, on the floor in this House and Senate that could find action within the next three weeks. And that's my report.
It is no exaggeration to say that it is a feverish period of time. Mr. Bullock?
I would like to bring up a bill that not necessarily went through education, but it will affect students and us alike. It's the distracted driving bill that had just been signed into law. So you cannot have that phone in your hand, or you will receive a fine and some community service hours. And it will then start to compound as you get more and more tickets. So our young people who are tethered to these devices and driving our vehicles will be in jeopardy.
So put that in the board brief so those of you who are tempted know that there are consequences. I'm looking forward to reading the details of that myself. Thank you, Mr. Bullock. Ms. Lipton, Ms. Tilly.
So just a question on the update on the conference committee on the education budget. My understanding is that the Senate version had some discussion of an opportunity index, which would potentially get us closer to an equitable funding formula as the SFRC reported to us and suggested back several months ago. And so I wanted to know if the department is in any way advocating for the inclusion of an opportunity index in the final conference report, reported education budget.
Good question. I would defer to Dr. Rice.
And if not?
Because I don't have a proper, informed enough answer for you.
And I appreciate profoundly your deference. We are not advocating for expressly. We are advocating for more money in the categoricals, but not for the index per se. There are the, and you and I have had some conversation about this, but the increase in categoricals creates explicit weights, which is in fact what the index is. And I'm supportive of the index, but I think that there's more than one way to skin a cat. There's more than one way to address the more than $4 billion worth of underfunding in public school education in the state.
But the department is just sort of agnostic as to how, as opposed to category, or is the department's position, we want more categoricals eh on the opportunity index?
The department can work with a wide range of ways of getting more money into the classroom to serve children. The opportunity index is one of those ways. But there are other ways as well. And it's not simply categoricals versus an opportunity index. There are an infinite number of ways to do categoricals. And we're pretty deeply engaged in that conversation with legislators, and particularly with education chairs, pretty granularly. We can have more conversation about that. But again, I think it's to the point of there are a lot of ways to skin a cat. We think that there are tremendous elements of improved budgets in each of these three budgets. The Exec Budget Rec, the Senate, and the House. We feel like they're going to put together ultimately, coming out of conference committee, a terrific budget. And so we're not wedded, per se, to an opportunity index. We are wedded to closing this multi-billion-dollar underfunding. Absolutely. Without a doubt. Other questions?
Dr. Rice?
I'm sorry. I beg your pardon.
No worries.
I'm, you know, ROE. Go ahead.
And forgive me if I missed it, if you said it already. The foster, foster, did you mention that?
I did. Disrupted education is how I coined it.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we have an update on that. That I brought that to the forefront last year. We, as a state board, passed the resolution to support them. And like one of the young people said, you know, that population has gotten overlooked a lot. So wanna definitely keep a focus on what's going on with the legislation. So and State Rep. Stephanie Young introduced some bills. I know there was a hearing.
They were reported out of committee today.
Okay.
Yep.
Are there other questions or comments associated with Mr. Ackley's report? Please.
Just real quickly, and you might have looked this up for us before, but the bill on epilepsy that was mentioned today during public comment.
I think it's a pre-bill.
It's a, yeah. She mentioned-
She mentioned that it was gonna get a number.
Looking for, yeah. I couldn't tell whether she has a sponsor yet or not.
They're looking, they're looking for a sponsor to take the concept into bill language and to get a bill number.
So we're still in on bill number.
Yeah. It's getting closer.
With her before they left. So if we'd like to write a resolution on that to support that bill, we could do that in the legislative committee.
Okay.
She said that she would write it and get it back to me, and then I can bring it to the legislative committee.
All right. That'd be great.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from board members? Hearing and seeing none. Board, we have two voting items left to address. The first is resolution on wheelchair category or MHSAA. And given its brevity, I think it merits rereading.
Sure.
We did introduce it seven hours ago.
Sure.
Yep. Please.
So I think we could title it "Letter of Support for a Permanent Wheelchair Category for MHSAA." And it would read, "Whereas research demonstrates and supports the positive benefits of athletic inclusion and academic achievement for students with physical disabilities, whereas the MHSAA wheelchair category pilot program in track and field concluded on June 3 was successful, whereas MHSAA is requesting letters of support for the permanent inclusion of the wheelchair category in athletics across the state. Therefore, be it resolved, the State Board of Education supports the permanent inclusion of the wheelchair category and seeks to serve this resolution as its letter of support."
We have a motion, we have a second. We have a, wow, talk about seconding that emotion. Do a jump ball. Okay, ready? Here we go. Mr. Bullock, the second. We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Please.
Yeah, I'll just say that, so my son has a good friend who has lots of physical disabilities, and he himself has one. And so we're sort of in that community of people. And the mother came to me and said, you know, hey, you should submit your letter of support. But I kind of feel like it would be a great opportunity just on the whole as a board to support this endeavor.
Okay. We have a motion, a second. We have discussion. Any further? Hearing none. If we could have, please.
I just want to add, as somebody who went through a very bad car accident a couple of years ago. And when you guys saw me, I was still in a back brace. But you did not see me anywhere near the worst of how I was walking. And still being able to participate in activities and have a life, that's gonna be so vital for those children. So I think this is a great resolution. Making sure that they're active, they're engaged, they have a social life, they're connecting with other young people, and they are part of those activities. So I definitely support this. Thank you for bringing this. This is a very nonpartisan issue, and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Ms. Tilly? If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Can I just clarify title?
Let, what do you think? You wanna, you want me to be-
Resolution on-
Resolution and letter of support of the permanent inclusion of wheelchair category MHSAA. I'll send it to you. How's that sound?
That's fine. You know, it's going to get-
I'll text you.
It'll end up in a laundry list of these expressions of support that MHSAA has. Very good. Please, a roll call vote.
Yes. Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pew? Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
And Tilly?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Very good. Thank you very much. Resolution number two is the resolution on book banning. Dr. Robinson, would you like to move it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So Dr. Robinson moves the resolution on book banning. Do we have a second? We have a second from Dr. Pew. Dr. Robinson, if you would please read it into the record. It is extensive, but I think that people who are listening have the right, be the responsibility, to share what it is that we're debating.
Well, I wish I had Minette's book here, but-
You can have it.
Yeah. Freedom to Read Resolution. Whereas the State Board of Education recognizes that school, library, and media centers provide Michigan students and staff equitable access to print and digital resources critical to supporting 21st century teaching and learning, and the Michigan Department of Education Top 10 Strategic Education Plan for Michigan schools and students. Whereas the State Board of Education further recognizes that certified library-media specialists serve a critical role in increasing student achievement by supporting, collaborating, and co-teaching with classroom teachers in reading, development, integrating information and technology literacy skills into the content curriculum and utilizing their professional knowledge and judgment in the selection of books and other materials. Whereas the First Amendment of the United States Constitution protects free speech and the freedom to read and write. Whereas the freedom to read a rich, diverse collection of books and other materials is essential for a strong democracy. Whereas during the first half of the 2022-23 school year, Pan-America's Index of School Book Bans listed 1,004- plus characters or themes. Whereas books addressing death, grief, mental illness, and suicide are increasingly targeted alongside nonfiction books that discuss feelings and emotions written for teenage and young adult audiences that confront these topics frequently. Whereas soft censorship, the quiet removal or hiding of books, presents a subtle challenge that may be obscuring the magnitude of the problem. Whereas in Michigan, during the 2022-23 school year, 18 books were banned in five school districts, including award-winning young adult novels such as The Lovely Bones, All Boys Aren't Blue, and The Perks of Being a Wallflower, written for teenage and young adult audiences that experience the themes and topics discussed in these books frequently. Whereas a 2022 poll found that over 70% of parents oppose book banning. And whereas in 1982, the United States Supreme Court ruled in Board of Education versus PICO that schools may not remove books based on narrowly partisan or political grounds, does this kind of censorship will result in official suppression of ideas? Now, therefore be it resolved that the State Board of Education expresses concern about the spreading problem of book banning and proliferating threats to freedom of expression in Michigan schools, and reaffirms the commitment to supporting writers' freedom of expression and the freedom of all Michigan children to read books without government censorship. Be it further resolved that the State Board of Education calls on local school boards and educational institutions to follow outlined best practice guidelines when approaching challenges to books. Be it further resolved that the State Board of Education calls on local school boards and educational institutions to protect the rights of students to learn and the ability of educators and librarians to teach students, including by way of providing students with the opportunity to read a wide array of books reflecting a multitude of viewpoints and perspectives.
Thank you very much, Dr. Robinson. We have a motion, we have a second, discussion. It's to you for discussion. If you'd like additional discussion, you are the mover.
The only thing I would say is that just yesterday, the state of Illinois passed a law prohibiting banning books in public libraries and schools. And closer to home, the Michigan Civil Rights Commission has asked the Attorney General for an official legal ruling on book banning as discrimination in respect to the Elliott Larson Civil Rights Act that was just expanded to include populations of LGBTQ persons. So I would just probably just add those two kind of facts to the record here.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Other thoughts or reflections? Ms. Tilly?
I want to make a motion, a motion for an amendment to amend the resolution.
Ben?
Do you want me to read it? Whereas, whereas the State Board of Education supports parents' rights to choose the age appropriateness for their child and rights to make critical decisions with their local school. And I'll give you a little, you know, where my thinking is. You know, I'm hearing a lot of the conversations about the racy things that are, or what's viewed as racy things in books. When I was growing up, I loved to read, and we had Shakespeare, the collection of Shakespeare. I read Octavia Butler, I read Alice Walker, I read Donald Goins. I was a teenager. Donald Goins, you know, he was an author from Detroit, very well-known author, and he talked about sex and pimps and drug dealing. And Shakespeare, you know, my favorite from Shakespeare was Romeo and Juliet. I got to a certain age and I realized, we were talking about a 16-year-old boy, 13-year-old girl, and they both committed suicide. Young people are reading these things. They've been reading these things. I'm not for banning books. My mom allowed me to read those things. I think that made my life richer. But for some parents, they may not be ready for their children to read about some of those things, and that's, that's fine. So I do want to just say that we support those parents and their rights to make decisions for their children. We're not trying to make decisions for their children, but we're not trying to ban books from everybody. So.
Very good. So a lot of us are visual learners. You've got the only visual on that.
I'll read it again.
Please, slowly.
Whereas, the State Board of Education supports parents' rights to choose the age appropriateness for their child and rights to make critical decisions with their local school.
Okay. So we have a motion to amend. Do we have a second and the motion to amend?
Word?
Do we have a, we have a motion, we have support. If you would like, you could accept it as a friendly amendment. If you would like a vote on it, you can have a vote on it.
I would accept that as a friendly amendment.
Okay. So you're going to read it one more time so it gets incorporated into. Whereas?
Whereas, the State Board of Education supports parents' rights to choose the age appropriateness for their child and rights to make critical decisions with their local school.
Okay. You got that?
Will you take a picture of it and text it to me so that I get the language correct?
I'll give you the paper.
Okay.
Very good. So we have a, we have a motion. It has been amended in a friendly fashion. Any other discussion? Please.
Well, I'd like to understand what, and I supported it, but I'd like to see if it goes as far as I'd like it to go. What does it mean, critical decisions with their local schools?
So if there's a book that, if a parent reads a book and decides that that information may not be something that they want their child to read, that's a decision that they need to make with their school district. I don't want my child to read this particular book. That critical decision, that's critical for that parent. It could be critical for that parent.
Okay, so they would tell the librarian that, don't let my child check this book out or look at it?
They can have that discussion with the school, school administrator, teacher, librarian. I think, you know, things like that. I don't know how much I would necessarily want my children to read, although I was allowed to read some things. There are some things I might not want my child to read, depending on their age. And I think as a parent, I would have that right to have that discussion if it's something I don't feel comfortable with.
And those discussions take place now.
I just want to make sure that we're vocal about.
Those discussions take place now. I think my child is a little young for that. Okay? I could see him reading that in a few years. Not so much right now.
And I totally agree and believe that those conversations happen on a local district level. I just want to make sure as a state board, we're saying.
We're on record as.
Yes, exactly.
Please.
And I just, I was trying to look because I thought that we always revert it back. It seems like there was a resolution a time before that reverted back to the local districts. And I'm not sure. Maybe not. Maybe I, again, may have fed up in my head, but I will support it, but I just want us to be careful as we're not saying that this is something new, because we've been saying that.
No, I don't, I don't think it's anything new. It just wasn't in this particular resolution. So I wanted to make sure that we're saying it here.
That's right. And I think we had this conversation beginning a couple of years ago. And I think Mr. McMillan at the time remarked that he appreciated the fact that I acknowledged that there was some measure of age appropriateness as a theme in the making available of literature in schools. So we've had this conversation. You're memorializing it in a resolution that's before the board. It's been accepted by the mover as a friendly amendment. It's been, it's been accepted by the seconder, it seems.
Oh, no, he's, I'm not the seconder of his motion.
I beg your, that is true. That would actually be too delicious.
Somebody else.
Dr. Pugh. And you accepted it as well. Okay, very good. So we have a motion. It's, it's been amended. We're now to Mr. McMillan for.
Yeah, I mean, this is a.
Continued reflection.
This is a, a, a topic that conservatives have been bashed over. They have been told that they're trying to ban books when they're just concerned about the age appropriateness of books. And as Dr. Rice just mentioned, he even talked about the age appropriateness back in February 22, 2022. He said of certain books, it's a high school book, not an elementary book, not a middle school book. So I mean, there is age appropriateness. And that is what, you know, what, the bulk of what's going on out there is that it's, things aren't age appropriate. Now, there may be things that also are not age appropriate in the high school. I would hope that that's, that is understood as well. And so, you know, what's going on is just a debate about what's appropriate and what's not. You know, as one of the callers said, there's no, nobody I don't, nobody I know of has ever said the government should ban this book. It should be taken off of Amazon. It should be taken off the bookshelves. I mean, there's none of that. You know, the reference to the polls, that poll was for public libraries. It wasn't for public school libraries. I think, you know, a large majority of parents, if they saw some of the books that are, that our parents are rising up and are concerned about, they absolutely would say that's not a book that is appropriate, even in a high school. And so, you know, I certainly appreciate Ms. Tilly's amendment. It helps, but a lot of the rhetoric in the wheras is very concerning. The idea that in the first, therefore be it resolved, and the freedom of all Michigan children to read books without government censorship, I'm not sure what that means. Does that mean that pornography should be allowed to be seen? Or is that some, you know, because that would be censorship? Or is that, you know, I mean, can we make it a little more clear? I've got an amendment that I would like to move, you know, that would just say, so that we're clear on this, after the last paragraph, insert, be it further resolved that pornography should not be available in schools to students in any grade. And I would like to make sure that it's clear, what is in here, at least that we can go on record and say that there is a level where, you know, certain books or certain materials should not be available in schools to students in any grade. So I'd like to make that.
Do you have that to distribute?
Yeah.
Beautiful.
I just wanted to, there is a differentiation, because I'm not saying pull books out of schools or pull books, books out of libraries. I'm saying that parents have the choice about what's age appropriateness. They should, you know, have the right to make the decision and talk to the school and say, I don't want my student reading this. Not that it should be pulled. So there is a.
Yeah, and so it was, that's why I say it was helpful. It just wasn't, I would hope that we would say that, you know, pornography is something that should not be in the, in the schools. We're not calling that censorship. We're just saying that, you know, I think it's against the law to distribute pornography to children. So I would just make it, make it so that we're clear that if, if we're talking about, you know, that Michigan children should have the freedom to read books without government censorship, that we're not talking about just any books, where there is a line, and pornography would be something that that, you know, that we wouldn't tolerate.
So we have a motion on the table from Mr. McMillan. Do we have a second?
Yes.
We have a second from Ms. Snyder. We've begun discussion. We appreciate that. Mr. Bullock?
So, I know we talk about things and we go, like, how far do you go? So the first thing I would say is, is that pornography is already illegal. It is child pornography. Pornography is illegal to have for underage individuals. Second, how are you defining it? Because it would then move to my biology anatomy lessons. It would move to other things, and those things are not the same. But if you're going to describe pornography in the way in which you're describing it.
Right.
It would then shut down other educational values.
It would include this. Are you okay with this?
For real?
It would include this. This is in a book that liberals are upset that they're trying to get rid of. This is what I would say would be something that is inappropriate.
So are you taking.
I don't know if anybody is saying that this should be in there, in the schools.
It probably shouldn't be in the school, but so the one exception to the rule you're going to.
Well, I'm just saying that that's an example. Should that, you know, that's, should that be in schools? Should that be allowed to be in schools, in a book? So I mean, there's got to be a line.
Where does that fall in the definition? And so how do you define it? I'm not fighting. I'm.
Guys, we're going to, we're going to, it's really fascinating listening to your conversation, but we're going to resume, we're going to resume the meeting. And so if you could, if you could ask to be called on by the chair, I'd really appreciate it. Mr. Bullock, you finish your statement, please.
The basis is, is that there's already laws in place that keep pornography out of schools. There, then if you are going to put that in, there, you have to define what that is before you start to grant the shoe openly broadly in force on it or make the statement.
Thank you. Mr. Bullock, Ms. Lipton?
Would the maker of this amendment accept this friendly amendment to the amendment? Be it further resolved that pornography should not be available in schools to students in any grade, and the appropriate remedy for removal of said works is solely through the criminal justice system?
No, it seems like the schools should determine, should make sure that they're not distributing pornography. I mean, I don't want to.
Pornography is defined by, there's the US Supreme Court opinion on the definition of pornography. So you're, I'm just asking, you're, so you're asking schools to make that determination that, that the Supreme Court has spoken on. You're asking them to be arbiters of pornography as opposed to the criminal justice system? That has already criminalized the dissemination of pornography.
I'm just, it's a very low bar, you know, I mean.
I'm just asking.
It's a good question, but, but, so, so, you've put it forward as a friendly amendment.
No.
Okay, so the answer is no. Back to you. Would you like to offer it as a freestanding amendment, non-friendly per, in a fashion? Would you like to offer it or not?
I mean, it depends on, it depends on whether this amendment gets.
I got you. So you only want to amend it if it, if it is like, if it is passed? Fair enough.
Yeah.
That's fine. Okay, thank you. Dr. Pugh?
I'm just going to say, it's unfortunate that you put amendments like this forward, because you put them forward knowing that this is not what we're talking about, and you put them forward so that you can put on record that we've said no.
No, not at all.
criminal justice system?
No, it seems like the schools should determine, should make sure that they're not distributing pornography. I mean, I don't want the.
Pornography is defined by, there's the U.S. Supreme Court opinion on the definition of pornography. So you're, I'm just asking, you're, so you're asking schools to make that determination that, that the Supreme Court has spoken on? You're asking them to be arbiters of pornography as opposed to the criminal justice system? That has already criminalized the dissemination of pornography.
I'm just, it's a very low bar, you know, I mean, we.
I'll tell you, it's a good question, but, but, so, so, you've put it forward as a friendly amendment.
No.
Okay, so the answer is no. Back to you. Would you like to offer it as a freestanding amendment, non-friendly per, in a fashion? Would you like to offer it or not?
I mean, it depends on, it depends on whether this amendment gets.
I got you. So you only want to amend it if it, if it is like, if it is passed? Fair enough.
Yeah.
That's fine. Okay, thank you. Dr. Pugh.
I'm just going to say, it's unfortunate that you put amendments like this forward, because you put them forward knowing that this is not what we're talking about, and you put them forward so that you can put on record that we've said no.
No, not at all.
Okay. It's back to you, but finish, because I don't want, I don't want it to be a conversation. You got the, you have the floor. You do you. Okay?
I mean, I just, I just think that it's provoking. I mean, this happens all the time. You know that none of us at this table wants pornography in schools. And why pornography is synonymous with the books that we're talking about? It's not. That's just a way to continue to spread misinformation, disinformation.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Ms. Snyder.
I mean, he just showed us what's in schools. So I mean, I don't know that it's dis, it's, I actually, I'm not going to say I don't know. It is not disinformation. It is what is in schools. And so collectively, as a board, we can, we can choose to make a statement about that or not. That's just up to us individually.
Very good.
What school was that taken from?
Troy.
No, no, we're, again, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to have a, it's going to be a board meeting, it's not going to be the view.
I can list you, many schools that haven't.
Okay.
Gender queer.
We have a, we have a motion, we have a second. Friendly amendment has been turned down. Any further discussion? This is a roll call vote on Mr. McMillan's amendment.
Correct. Okay. Bullock?
No.
Lipton?
No.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
No.
Pugh?
No.
Robinson?
No.
Snyder?
Yes.
Tilly?
No.
Motion fails.
We are back to the, the base resolution with the single amendment presented and accepted in a friendly fashion. Any other discussion? Hearing and seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote.
Can I just clarify that this is an addition, additional paragraph being added to the resolution? Did we have a placement as to where?
It would be the last whereas.
The last whereas, okay, very good. All right. Noted, thank you. Okay. Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
This is on the base resolution.
This is on the resolution?
No.
This is on the resolution with her amendment.
Yeah. No.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
And Tilly?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much, board. Board, it is 5:15. Are there any comments by state board members?
I will.
Please.
Try to be brief. I'm a unique individual born on the Fourth of July, and being that Juneteenth is the national independence holiday coming up, I just want to, you already brought up that Juneteenth would be just June 19th, but as Lincoln freed the slaves, actually in 1862, then reiterated it in 1863, this is a little left.
1863. 1863. 1863.
You said 19.
Oh, I said 19? Yeah, but originally, he, originally he did it in September of 1862, then it was reiterated in the Emancipation Proclamation that freed the slaves January 1st, 1863. But folks were not happy with the outcome of the war. Folks were not, and it said, "All enslaved shall be then thencefore forever free." Folks were not happy with the outcome. Certain southern states became safe havens, especially Texas. Folks moved to Texas. That the president had to send in his own army into Texas in Galveston with General Granger and read the executive order number three in 1865 on June 19th, where he said to the people of Texas that the black folks was free, that their relationship was no longer that of master and slave, that they are now, if to maintain that relationship is to be employer and employee, and that this is how it is to be moving forward. And we can still talk about, we're still trying to be that, but I didn't know anything about Juneteenth growing up in Detroit. It wasn't until I went to school in New Mexico, in Albuquerque, where it was like one of the biggest celebrations. And so experiencing that, but growing up on the Fourth of July, these were totally two different holidays to me. And so I got to learn things that were not in certain books and certain educations, or people not allowing all of history to be told the way it's told. So originally, it was Jubilee Day, and then changed over to Juneteenth later on, probably when Texas finally made it a holiday in '79, and then it's moved forward. Biden has now made it a national holiday, and this will be our first official, matter of fact, the state of Michigan has passed it in the Senate and is going, over in the House, to make it a state official holiday to fall in accordance with the federal guidelines of being a national holiday. And I just wanted to say that I get two national holidays for us being free on Independence Day now.
Two national holidays in 15 days.
Yeah.
Very good, thank you. Happy early birthday.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Snyder.
So today is my actual birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday. I'm 39, and I am going to just share a little bit about that. Born in 1984, this year has importance because George Orwell's dystopian novel was published in 1949, titled for that year. That book is quite relevant today, I think. Themes of the danger of totalitarianism, mass surveillance, and propaganda. These themes are more prominent today than 39 or even 74 years ago. The Ministry of Truth reminds me of today's woke cancel culture, if you will. I fear that, you know, voting no on a resolution today of being considered a book banner because I don't think pornography belongs in schools is very much in line with that. But in the Book of 1984, truth, science, and facts are manipulated to control people, which sounds very familiar today. But I do appreciate the birthday wishes, not trying to be tongue-in-cheek, just speaking my truth, and again, look forward to continuing the fight and coming back to this table. I am actually happy to be here.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Doesn't get, doesn't get to be a better present than this.
Right?
Other, other board comments, go on once, twice, please. Ms. Tilly.
I want to say, I wish I hadn't missed Camp Tea. My baby graduated on the same day, so definitely had to be in Florida with her for her graduation, and it was wonderful.
We had a horrible time.
That's not what I heard. I heard you were climbing the rock wall. And next time, I will definitely be there, so.
There are pictures. Thank you, Ms. Tilly. Anything more for the good of the group?
We heard from Model Project in Casville. Would love to hear more about that as well.
Model Project.
It sounded like it was a health, mental health?
The two physicians. It was a public comment, yeah.
All right. The, the doctor and the nurse?
Yes.
Very good. Okay, thank you.
You know, and I would like to say, you know, the callers about foster care and how that they're handled and, you know, trying to engage parents, you know, I just, maybe there is something that we could do. I really do hope that, that they're not forgotten.
Well, they're not forgotten in any way, shape, or form.
I feel like we're, you know, the Twilight Zone today.
Maybe, that may be too much information. Board members, future meetings are Tuesday, August 8th, Tuesday, September 12th, regular